Thomas Paine. Thomas Paine. Thomas Paine. Sam Adams. Sam Adams. Sam Adams. Benjamin Freitlin. Benjamin Freitlin. Benjamin Freitlin. These men spoke up for what they thought was right. From their courage came such documents as the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. From their willingness to speak what was sometimes unpopular but right, we enjoy such liberties as freedom of speech, the right to keep and bear arms, and freedom of religion. There are those who still wish to oppress our freedoms, and there are still patriots willing to stand up and defend life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Men like Zeb Bell, who honor our founding fathers and what they stood for. It's now time for Zeb at the Ranch, speaking up and defending your freedoms. Brought to you by Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, and all of the other great advertisers on the program. And now, Zeb Bell.
You know, I want you to really, really think about these words, and they are oh-so-true. Liberals say, "If confiscating all guns saves just one life, it's worth it." Well then, if deporting all illegals saves just one life, wouldn't that be worth it? Think about it. Here comes Kate Smith, and God bless America, followed by a patriot with our pledge of allegiance. Come on now, patriots, call in. Good morning.
I hope you're free.
And a good, good morning to you. Zeb Bell, Zeb at the Ranch, and of course, brought to you by our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations, serving you with a great big spring tire sale. You stop in and see those really good folks today. Also, I want to remind you about some of our great advertisers, like Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation at 1263 Bennett Avenue, Suite 2 in Burley, helping you get back to being you. Right now, let's go to the phone line and have our pledge of allegiance. Good morning.
Well, good morning, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wheels, would you mind checking all the settings on the dials and everything to make sure everything's alright, uh, just to make sure, if you would, my friend? And thank you for doing the pledge. And right now, I want to have the weather forecast, brought to you by KNR Rental, at 256 South 600 West of Hayburn. Hello, Roger. How you doing over there, and the rest of the crew? They're on the Burley-Paul Highway. You couldn't miss them. I mean, they've got a front yard full of tools and equipment, ready for you, for any project that you need to finalize. And if you're not sure what you need, all you've got to do is call them at 678-3122. They will help you at KNR Rental. Right now, here's Gina with the weather.
It's gonna be a beautiful day as we hit midweek. Here's a look at your weather forecast. We're expecting sunny skies with a high of sixty, winds out of the west, right around fifteen miles an hour. Gusts as high as thirty miles an hour. For tonight, mostly clear skies, expecting a low of thirty-eight. Tomorrow, another beautiful day, sunny skies, high of sixty-seven, mostly clear and forty-two for Thursday night. By Friday, sunny and seventy-seven. Unfortunately, as we head on into the weekend, we are expecting some rain showers, mostly cloudy skies, and highs are gonna be in the upper fifties. That's a look at your weather forecast for Zeb at the Ranch.
Oh, it was good while it lasted, at least we'll get a day or so. Hey, the weather brought to you by KNR Rental, at 256 South 600 West of Hayburn. As I said, they're right there on the Burley-Paul Highway, with the best of tools and equipment to finish any project you have. Get in there today and talk to them, and don't forget, too, if you want to call ahead, first, find out what you need, 678-3122, KNR Rental. A couple of things I want to mention real quick. Tomorrow, we'll get into that in just a minute, about lunch bunch, but I want to also remind you about Saturday. Saturday from four to six PM at the Rupert Senior Center, at 702 11th Street in Rupert, the benefit dinner for JR Strunk. Please be there. Along with the dinner, they're gonna have a lot of raffles, and I urge you to be a part of it, to say thank you to JR for all he's done for everybody else. Benefit dinner for JR Strunk. Don't forget that, coming up on Saturday, at the Rupert Senior Center. Ramsey Heating and Electric, my goodness sakes, we want to say good morning to those good folks. For all your heating, cooling, and electrical needs, look no further than at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley. Ramsey Heating and Electric, and they're open the doors at 7:30 in the morning till five, Monday through Friday. They have been in business over six decades. Think about that. Uh, that's a track record that is really merit-worthy, let me tell you. They've done a great job for you, so please get ahold of them today. If you want to call ahead, 678-0459, Ramsey Heating and Electric, at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley. Like I mentioned a moment ago, started to anyway, Lunch Bunch will be tomorrow at Denny's Restaurant, 611 North Overland in Burley. Now, I have urged, and urged, and urged you to bring somebody, uh, bring a friend, bring a relative, and whatever, we just want you there at 11:30 at 611 North Overland in Burley, America's Diner, tomorrow, tomorrow, Thursday, at Denny's Restaurant. Our thanks go out to our gift certificate donors, Walmarts, Miss Foods, Hatson Mortuary, Stokes Groceries, Doug Martin, and Denny's. Please, come on down and join the fun. Those that always start for the first time, they come back every month. It's just a big, old, happy family at Denny's Restaurant, America's Diner. Thank you very much. Caller, good morning, you're on the air. Go ahead.
Good morning, good morning, good morning.
Well, good morning, good morning, good morning to you, my friend. What can I do for you?
Well, I want to give kudos to the government, and I want to tell them how stupid they are.
Oh, okay.
First thing, first, all the good stuff. You know, here a few years back, when they came out with that brake light in the back window of your car?
Yeah.
That was a wonderful thing. Okay? And then, now, most cars, well, I think it is required that you have daylight running lights.
Okay.
And I'll tell you how important that is to me, having macular degeneration is, I can see that car from a long ways off.
All right.
And, but that's a good thing. Okay, now, for the stupidity things they've done over the years, the seatbelts, okay? Back in the seventies, they came out with a plan where you had to have the seatbelt clasped before your car would start.
Mm-hmm.
So then, people said, "Okay." So they get, they go to their car, before they got in, they'd lock the seatbelt together, and then they'd set on the seatbelt. You know how silly that was?
Right. Hurry, Keith, please.
If they went to a store, if they went to a store or something, got some groceries or something, and set it on the passenger seat, their car wouldn't start.
Oh, my.
Yeah, and so you had to clasp that together, and then put your package on top of it. That's just one of the many silly things they did, but I am really proud of the, the third light and the daylight running lights.
Well, the one thing, the one thing I want to say this morning, Keith, and I don't want to elongate this into a long dissertation, but the one thing that really bothers me, living in a rural area, and I've lived on a farm all my life, a ranch all my life, whatever the case might be, is, in the early morning hours, please tell me why people can't turn on their headlights. There are many vehicles that do not have, uh, when you turn the key on, the automatic light. I mean, you have to turn the lights on. And why is it that it's almost dark still, and dawn hasn't prevailed itself with the sun coming over the mountain? Why do people drive around in almost darkness with no lights on? That, to me, if they get caught, they ought to be thrown in jail.
Well, that's certainly true, and that's one of the greatest things that they've came up with yet. But some of these other frills, well, silly things, that they put on cars, that are supposed to protect you, but they don't.
Okay. Well, I agree with you.
If you're standing on it.
Yeah, government intrusion in our lives to protect us, sometimes is just absolutely stupid. Keith, appreciate it, and I'm glad you broke the ice this morning. Thank you for your call, buddy, I appreciate it, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Calls welcome, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. If you're Aiken and a Paine, I know where you ought to go to feel better and get back to being you, and that's, of course, Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation, at 1263 Bennett Avenue, Suite 2 in Burley. Hello, Nick Greenwell, I'll be over there at one o'clock tomorrow afternoon, and they can help you with all the exercises and the use of the hydrotherapy pool. Oh, you better get in there. You better get in there and get back to being you. Call them, 678-1191. That number again, 678-1191, the best. Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation, at 1263 Bennett Avenue, Suite 2 in Burley. Caller, I will be right there, stand by, as I also want to talk to everybody about irrigation. And when I'm talking about irrigation, that means I'm talking about my friends over at Rain for Rent. Hello, Jake and the rest of the crew this morning. I'll tell you, they're located at 134 South 600 West of Paul, and the number to call, the hotline number for your irrigation needs, 438-5065. They are a ranky diamond dealer, but above all that, they have a dedicated and really knowledgeable sales and service department, ready to serve you, at Rain for Rent, with Jake and the rest of the crew, and also, they've got the telemetry annex boxes. You can run your pivots right through your telephone, I'm telling you, it's amazing. Rain for Rent over in Paul, you get ahold of them today. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Zeb, I, I think the lights on the cars should be on in the daylight, but you know there's a lot of people leaving them on bright.
Yeah. And, okay, I'm gonna, now that you talk about that...
In the daytime are almost as bad as bright lights at night.
Yeah, and one thing, Bob, and again, I'm not gonna make any jokes about this, because it's really serious, I don't know how your eyes are in the dark, but these new piercing bright headlights that are on these newer cars, they drive me almost into the barrel pit.
Yep, you're absolutely right, and the older you get, the farther into the barrel pit you get.
Yeah, if there's a big enough barrel pit.
Have a good day, Zeb.
All right. I don't like those new lights, I don't like anything to do with them, I think that they just, they just tear my eyesight apart at night. Uh, there is no mellowness, if that's a word, uh, with that light. It's sharp, piercing light, and I know that when we went to Arizona a couple of weeks back, and coming home early, early in the morning, going up towards Wikiup, and then also towards, um, Las Vegas, wow, some of those lights just absolutely, you can't see, I hate them, and I'll never say a good thing about them. Calls are welcome, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. Somebody told me, "Well, those lights aren't for the oncoming driver, they're for the driver behind the wheel." That might be all well and good, but when you blind somebody to the point where you can't hardly see where you're going, it's dangerous. Caller, I'll be right there, stand by. Ark Animal Hospital with Dr. Bill and the rest of the crew, at 750 21st Street, near Connection Credit Union in Hayburn. Number to call, 678-1177. Uh, it's springtime, spay and neuter your dogs and kitty cats, all of that, and don't forget, too, it's time to deworm your horses, and they've got all the calving supplies, and in general, they are a mixed animal practice, meaning big or small, they take care of them all, at Ark Animal Hospital, where they have the warm hearts for the cold noses, 678-1177. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Morning, Zeb.
Yes, sir.
It's the good news guy about, uh, lunch at the Burley Senior Center today. It's meatloaf, mixed vegetables, and of course salad, and they say we're gonna have a giant cookie.
Oh.
To show...
A giant cookie, a yummy giant cookie.
That's right. I want to remind people about the blood draw on the 22nd of April for the check for cancer. It is happening between eight and twelve, and you need to sign up.
All right, well, listen, Joe, you are the world's best cheerleader for the senior center on Overland, and God bless you, uh, great meals, nice people, we'll send them over, Joe, thank you so much.
Yeah, only five bucks could get you all you can eat.
There you go. There you go. Thank you, the yummy man. Uh, hooray, and I mean this, I'm gonna stand up on my chair and shout, "Hooray!" for the people in Laguna Beach, California. Here is a California city that needs our applause. Here is a California city that needs us to stand up and say, "That's the way to do it." Now, what am I referring to? Do you remember a couple of days ago, I had a story on the air, about how a couple of people protested the red, white, and blue police on the cars of the Laguna Beach Police Department? They said that the patriotic colors were too aggressive, and they said that the patriotic colors, uh, they offended and irritated those that were not citizens. Well, they had a meeting last night at the town hall in Laguna Beach, California, and they kind of put it out to the public, "Okay, we, the police department, do not want to change our red, white, and blue salute to the police and our country and our flag. What do you think?" And a resounding round of applause and cheering went up, and then, the entirety, with the exception of a couple of kooks and crackpots, probably less than six, the majority of all the people went to their feet and started singing our national anthem. When I saw the tape of this, and how the people, at that city council meeting, went to start singing our national anthem, I am not ashamed at all, it brought tears to my eyes of happiness, that finally, people are speaking up and speaking out, and they're standing up to the left, and they're telling them, the left, to go back to their little dark holes. This absolutely meant something, and I think it was heard all over the United States, that the people in Laguna Beach were not gonna be dictated to by a couple of crackpots and nitwits that were anti-American, anti-red, white, and blue, and said, "Oh, those colors, why, they're too aggressive, and they offend illegals." And I'm gonna be very blunt and say, "Who the heck cares if it offends illegals?" You know, think about this, and I was pondering, I was pondering this, early this morning, when, uh, we got up and we were exercising, and I, they said on the news, a story about, they had a gentleman on the TV talking about Laguna Beach, and he said that, "Had it gone the other way, this would have been, and could have been, a death knell to our celebration of Independence Day on the Fourth of July. It could have been the death knell of having our flag hanging over various meetings or over sporting events. It could have been the death knell for our flag and our colors." Think about it. A parade on the Independence Day, the Fourth of July, led by our red, white, and blue of the United States of America, and some of these nitwits would complain and say, "Well, that's offensive to illegals, it's too aggressive, you can't do that." I am so glad, and so happy this morning, for the people that stood up, and they were counted on, in Laguna Beach, California, because they had the guts. They had the nerve and the backbone to tell these nitwits where to go. Calls welcome, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. Don't forget Sophie's Chatterbox, 530 East Street in Rupert. Oh, every Monday, we give away a dozen delicious cookies to a winner of our trivia contest, and if you want to have the best of cookies from their delicious bakery, and you want to stop in and have a delicious breakfast or lunch, at Sophie's Chatterbox, 530 East Street in Rupert. Really, really good people. Caller, I'll be right there. I also want to acknowledge, just down the street a little bit, from Sophie's Mad River Laser, oh, Nicole and the rest of the crew, I'm telling you, they've gone through a homespun upgrade, and they are proudly offering more locally sourced items and made in the USA products. Yes, siree, Bobby. And if you go in there and have shirts, or t-shirts, or engraving, or screen printing, and you mention that you heard me on the radio talking about Mad River Laser, you can get a savings of up to fifty dollars. At Mad River Laser, 502 East Street in Rupert, on the east side of the square, next to the youth ranch, you stop in and see them today. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Good morning, Zeb. When I see that flag, pay tribute to it, wherever it's flying, and various sporting events, whatever, but I think of Iwo Jima, and putting that flag up on the monument we have to that. It's just amazing to me that we have allowed our country to sink into the abyss of not honoring our flag, whether it be football players kneeling because they don't want to pay respect to our flag. I mean, all of these people, if they don't like this country, get the heck out of here.
Well, your verbiage.
They, uh, they want to come over here, enjoy all the welfare, and all the benefits of the freedom of being able to move around, but they don't want to pay homage to the liberty and freedom that that flag represents, and all of the soldiers that gave the ultimate sacrifice in various wars to be able to have the freedom we have today. They just come over here, want the freebies, and get on the welfare system, they don't want to assimilate. I, I'm with you, Zeb, I'm tired of it, and, and I see people at, uh, various activities, they can't spend a minute to put their hand over their heart while the national anthem, they're still playing with their, their devices.
Yeah.
It just really irritates me.
Well, let me jump in here and say this, Adrian, and I appreciate your comment, but, uh, somebody not too many weeks ago criticized me and said, "Well, you've got to have a little compassion and understanding for somebody else," and I said, "No, I don't, no, I won't, and no, I can't." I love this country, I'm a nationalist, I'm proud of that word, I'm a nationalist, because I love the United States of America, and everything that is provided for me and my family, and my, uh, my predecessors that fought and died for that flag. I'm not gonna give credence to anybody else's opinion, because I don't care about their opinion. This is America, and I love it.
Well, me too, I'll put a ditto on that, for sure, Zeb. You and I, you know, growing up, understanding what this country's all about, that our founding fathers, and many of them gave the ultimate sacrifice. If you look at the signing of the Declaration of Independence, um, many of those lost their families, lost their lives, lost their, you know, their fortunes, and they did pledge their lives, their fortune, and their sacred honor, and I guarantee you, none of them backed off when the British were coming. They knew what they were doing, and they were standing up for something that God approved. And I truly believe that our founding fathers were, um, inspired by God, because we've never had a country like this in the history of the planet.
I agree. I've gotta, I've gotta run, and I've gotta get another commercial in here, Adrian, but I always can count on you, because I agree, everything you said, and the pride in America, I don't have any pride in any other country. I don't, because this is my land, this is my homeland where I was born.
...a couple times, and, you know, I've never been a big world traveler, but just coming out of Mexico, or coming out of Canada, always glad to see the American flag again.
Amen, God bless you, thank you for your call, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller, number two, I'll be right there, I promise. I want to remind everybody about Berry Equipment and Rental Sales Service and Parts, at 159 West Highway 30 in Burley, 465 Addison Avenue, Weston Twin, and the Nampa location. Don't forget, they've got all the loaders, the excavators, and the mowers, all the lifting, digging, pushing, and carrying equipment, ready for you, and they've got all the Bobcats, all the different sizes, and they're ready to serve you with the best of equipment rentals and retail equipment sales. You stop in and talk to the best, nice, nice people, at Berry Equipment and Rental in Burley, Twin Falls, and Nampa. Stop in and see them today. Caller, you're on the air.
Good morning, Zeb. I just want to say that this, uh, gives me, uh, renewed hope in our country, and thank God, some people are willing to stand up for it.
Amen, Rod, appreciate it. Uh, Laguna Beach, California, I'm personally gonna send the mayor and his city council kudos, along with the rest of the town, for standing up and telling the nitwits to leave and get out of sight.
Exactly, and, uh, let's hope that more people take, uh, take their example in the heart.
Thank you, my friend, thank you, I appreciate it. You know, uh, that might sound a little bit callous, what I said earlier, but I don't care. I really don't care. America is my homeland. I have been so blessed to be born in this great country, and I had the opportunities to do and achieve what I wanted to do. Now, I'm an old man, but I can look over my shoulder in the rearview mirror, and I can see all the goodness and all the blessings that I've had, because I live in America. Do I pledge allegiance to any other country? No. Do I care about how they, other countries, run their countries? No. Do I care about anybody more than American citizens? No. And so there, I guess if I'm a nationalist, I love this country, and everything is provided for me. And if you out there in radio land that are a lefty, nitwit, that wants to condemn me for saying I'm a nationalist, have at it, have at it, enjoy your day, but I'm not gonna change. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Good morning, Zeb, how are you doing this morning?
Ah, my friend, thank you, I'm good.
You know, people always say, "Well, there's nothing I can do," uh, and they are absolutely wrong. I'm gonna put out two points. When, uh, we put in that whole roll call monument, they said we couldn't fly the flag it has staff, we took it to the state senate, and we got it. Adam Fowler and Kelly Antin got flag education back in school, so if you really believe, and you really want to try, you can move it.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I'm not gonna weaken on this, my dear friend George, no way or shape or form am I gonna back up and be, uh, complimentary to other people's opinions about, "Oh, well, we're too aggressive, oh, no, we can't have the flag, oh, no, we can't show our patriotism." I'm not gonna give those people the time of day.
Nope, nope, you gotta give it a little bit of guts and a lot of backbone, and, uh, you can get, you can stand up for your rights, and it will, you will prevail.
Absolutely. Hey, while I got you on the phone, big Saturday over at the Rupert Senior Center, benefit dinner for our friend JR Strunk, uh, four to six PM, right?
Yes, that is right. A little update on JR, he went under the knife yesterday, got a pin put in his leg, and, uh, went over and visited him last night, he's shiver, and he's ready to get out, start his radiation.
Well, God bless. All right, George, I want to tell you, for all you do, you are a patriot, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Uh, thanks, Zeb, but couldn't do without the help of the community, and, uh, with you promoting it for us is a great big blessing.
All right.
Thank you for that.
You're very welcome, my dear, dear friend. Thank you for your call, appreciate it. Uh, there's a man that absolutely has done so much for the community, George Mass, and he and his lovely wife Donna, I'm proud to call him my friends. Anyway, a great big salute to Laguna Beach, California. Finally, 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 we have communities coming together and telling the nitwits, "Go back in the dark hole from which you came. We're gonna have our patriotic colors. We're going to sing our national anthem. We're going to say our pledge of allegiance, and if you don't like it..." Being this close to the ocean, it's a lot of big water out there, enjoy your swim. Calls welcome, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. Kind of like, and I gotta share this with you a little bit, folks, kind of like the vaccination issue. You're saying, "How could you go from the flag to vaccinations?" Well, it's fairly easy. There was a guy that sent me an email the other day, that kind of mocked me a little bit, for my very, very, uh, heavy-handed stand for vaccinations, and I'm not gonna change, and so, "Well, you ought to present the other side." No! No, I'm not gonna present the other side. I don't believe in the other side. I'm not going to be fair and balanced on this situation. We need to have parents and children make sure that they get vaccinated. I do not want to... I do not want to see an uptick, like we already are with measles, of diseases that can kill and cripple. And so to say that I'm going to be fair and balanced and give the other side credence on my program, ain't going to happen out there. I'm very, very strong-willed about you must and should make sure you're immunized and your children are immunized, and I'm not going to change. Don't forget, Perkins is going to be open this Easter Sunday from six A.M. in the morning until ten P.M., and they're located at eight hundred North Overland in Burley. Oh, yeah, you better believe it. They're celebrating strawberry fresh-to-vol. Oh, they've got a lot of fresh strawberry entrees, and delicious fresh strawberry pie, all of this for Easter. You're going to love it, along with all the other great food at Perkins Restaurant and Bakery, eight hundred North Overland in Burley, where they believe in being best buds to your taste buds at Perkins. Mm-hmm, good. Calls are welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Give me a call. I mentioned a little bit ago that measles are going higher and higher in numbers. We're approaching a thousand people, and you say, well, gee, out of three hundred and thirty-five, thirty-five, forty-five million people, that's not that many, but it's growing. It's growing and getting more serious, and it's something that has to be addressed. I mentioned the other day, over in Madagascar, they had over twelve hundred die from measles. The resurgence of these diseases is extremely dangerous, and in this country, a twenty-five year high. It's got to be taken care of. Calls are welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Oh, well, I'll get into that in just a minute. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Well, once again, Zeb, the one story, or one aspect of all this illegal immigration that nobody wants to talk about, is all of the diseases that we've eradicated.
Yep.
And now we have the disease, I mean, pharmaceutical that would control tuberculosis, and we've now got diseases in here that our antibiotics won't touch.
Mm-hmm.
And we even got Chargis, we've even got leprosy coming back into the country, which you only think of in the Bible. And we're bringing all these diseases. We had whooping cough over here in Wendell, and these things are not just popping up due to the, totally to the lack of vaccination, it's due to the fact, these people aren't being screened when they come in, and I know my grandfather had to go up this long flight of stairs at Ellis Island, and people that couldn't make that or had a hard time making it, they got reexamined, and many of them got sent back across the pond, you know, back to their homeland. And it's just, we've got to get a handle on this immigration thing.
Well, there's a couple of, there's some people that need to be given, I think, special recognition and special praise for the job that they do, and that's our Border Patrol agents and anyone working for our government on the border. They are subjecting themselves to danger factors, they're subjecting themselves to being beaten up, they're subjecting themselves to possibly being shot, and they're subjecting themselves to diseases that are running rampant with the caravanners and others coming up from other countries, whether it's tuberculosis, or whether it's measles, whether it's mumps, or whether it's some certain strains of a disease that I know more about than most people, and that's polio, and we're just not doing anything to protect our people in this country, and especially our people that are working on the border.
Well, yeah, it is, and the main function of government is protection of life and property, and Article Four, Section Four of the U.S. Constitution says, our elected officials are to protect us against invasion. It doesn't say a standing army, it says invasion. We are being invaded, and we need to stop it.
Absolutely. Adrian, I got to do a weather forecast, but I'm glad you called back. This sickness and disease spreading across America, whether it's measles or any other kind of physical conflagration, it's got to stop, because I see where our medical experts are going to be absolutely overrun. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Glad I called back and gave that a...
Yes, sir.
Have a great day.
Yes, sir. Calls welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Don't forget, Lennox and Ramsey Heating and Electric. Oh, yeah, I'll tell you what, don't wait, don't wait. Ramsey Heating and Electric, call them to schedule a tune-up for your whole home comfort system, and if you're in the market for a new Lennox Home Comfort System, they are together offering up to seventeen hundred dollars in rebates on a new system, or ask about how the low monthly payment financing options can work. Ramsey Heating and Electric at six seven eight zero four five nine, or go to them online at ramsesonline.com. Terms and conditions apply. See dealer for details. Ramsey Heating and Electric and Lennox, really good people. All right, calls are welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Tomorrow, on April eighteenth, the Mueller investigation report will be turned over for examination. Now, the Democrats, with some of the silly clowns that have managed to wiggle their way out of a clown car, like Adam Schiff and Swalwell and others, they automatically, regardless of what the report says, regardless of what the report says, they are going to arbitrate, argue, and go on with more investigations, wasting your time and our money. I really feel sorry for William Barr, the Attorney General. I feel like this man that has devoted his life to being honest and fair and balanced is absolutely being drug through the muck and the mire of the Democrats right now, no matter what this report says, as far as no collusion. No matter what this report says that may damn some Democrats, or perhaps maybe even many, they're going to come after him, and they're going to call him the president's lapdog, they're going to call him all kinds of things, and they're going to extend this absolutely, nothing more than stupidity. They're going to extend it at least through 2020. And I myself am going to try to pick through as much as I can of it, and find out and understand as much of it as I can during the course of the weekend. And I noticed that they're even running on certain television shows, an advertisement with millionaire Tom Steyer. You know, he's the guy that made literally millions and millions and millions of dollars in the energy business, and then he turned around and kicked everybody in the face for supporting the energy business. He's coming out and really going after this report, calling it fraudulent and everything else. They don't know. They haven't read it. They really don't understand the concepts of it, but the Democrats, that always seem to be that shining light on top of the hill, which is nothing more than an ever-ready flashlight about ready to go out, they don't know anything more than you and I. Caller, quickly, before I do the weather, go ahead.
You bet. Good morning, Mr. Bell. You know, I don't think the Democrats would care one way or the other if it was any other president, but their hatred for Trump overshadows their patriotism, and they're working for the people who hired them.
Well, I can't argue that, because I think it's becoming blatantly obvious that they will not allow anything to go through that would give Donald Trump any really good checkmarks on his administration and what they've done for the American people. The Democrats are obsessed with getting rid of this man.
Yeah, they are. That's what I said. It's overshadowed there, if they ever had any common sense.
You know, there are some Democrats out there that I think have common sense. I'll mention one, from West Virginia, Joe Manchin. I think he's got some common sense and understands really what's going on, but for him to come out and speak out, you're going to see the Schumers and the Pelosi's and the AOCs and everybody, they're going to get a big shovel, and they're going to bury him.
Well, sure they are, because he's not part of their agenda. He's not going along with their socialist attitude and agendas. And, you know, if people don't wake up and say, enough is enough, we're sunk.
No.
You know, I mean, how can we ever, how can we ever dig our way out of this baloney?
Well, and I'm so glad you said what you said.
You were holding your breath.
No, I was starting to turn blue, and I was really concerned there for a minute.
Have a good day.
All right, Donna, I'd love you. Thank you so much. We got to get a weather forecast on here really quick, and the weather brought to you by Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids. Oh, they are so good, and can help you with your hearing health. You know, it might be a problem with diabetes, it might be high blood pressure, it might be that you're overweight, all of these factors play possibly into your lack of hearing. Well, talk to the best. All you have to do is get ahold of Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids. They're right behind the Minidoka Hospital, across from the emergency room, and they're waiting right now to serve you. Call them at three one two zero nine five seven. That number again, three one two zero nine five seven. We'll tell you more right after the weather.
Going to be a beautiful day as we hit midweek. Here's a look at your weather forecast. We're expecting sunny skies with a high of sixty, winds out of the west, right around fifteen miles an hour. Gustess high is thirty miles an hour. For tonight, mostly clear skies, expecting a low of thirty-eight. Tomorrow, another beautiful day, sunny skies, high of sixty-seven, mostly clear and forty-two for Thursday night. By Friday, sunny and seventy-seven. Unfortunately, as we head on into the weekend, we are expecting some rain showers, mostly cloudy skies, and highs are going to be in the upper fifties. That's a look at your weather forecast for Zeb at the Ranch.
Thank you, Gina. Again, a very outstanding forecast she puts together for us every single day, and it's brought to you this hour by Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids, and they are the best at treating your hearing health needs. Please call them for an appointment today, three one two zero nine five seven. This is Holy Week, and for those of us that are Christians, it means more, perhaps, at this time of the year than at any other time. The crucifixion of Jesus Christ and the resurrection on Easter morning. And tomorrow, we're going to give tribute at, I think we're going to do it at about ten thirty-two tomorrow morning, for the Holy Week, and extend the very best to you and your family for Easter. But I'm going to go back to what I have said many, many times on this program over the course of the last couple of months. Ministers and pastors have not called. I don't know if they're sitting there going, well, we're not going to let that talk show host run us. I'm sure that's probably part of the attitude, but they've got to be a part of the community in helping the community, instead of being part of the problem. And I have asked them to be a part of the show and come on, and we'll talk about societal ills, we'll talk about a wide arrangement of things that, quite frankly, I think we need to make society better with. But they're not calling, and they won't call. One man called from Twin Falls, Reverend Paul Thompson with the East Side Baptist Church, and he's been on twice. I've extended the time for these gentlemen to be a part of this program, and they have refused, and it's sad and embarrassing, I think for them, not to have wanted to be a part of Holy Week on my program. Calls welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Yeah, you can go to your congregation this Sunday, and you can say whatever you want about me, you can condemn me and my attitude or whatever, that's fine, but the fact of the matter is, you've been offered the airtime, and you have not done a thing. Let's not forget our friends at your Magic Valley Lushwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you with the best of tires and a big spring tire sale, and you can save a lot of money, I mean, a lot of money, on some of the top-name tires for your cars, pickups, and SUVs. Don't forget, they've got like the Ultra Z nine hundred, whoa, up to an eighty-thousand-mile warranty. Wow, you better check on that for your cars, or for your pickups and SUVs, the Open Country AT2, all-terrain traction, outstanding ride. All of these tires, pardon me, and more, available for you for safe driving at all seven locations of your Magic Valley Lushwab Tire Centers, and the best in brake service, front-end alignment, shocks and struts, and batteries, all of this with Lane and Rupert, Dave on Blue Lakes and Twin, Mike and Buell, Mike and Jerome, the Twist Family and Paul, nice people, Daniel on Pole Line and Twin, and Randy on Overland and Burley. Absolutely the best, your Magic Valley Lushwab Tire Centers. All right, time for a call. Boy, that little frog's back. Four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Please give me a jingle. Again, I want to mention to you that Ramsey Heating and Electric and Lennox all teamed up for your home comfort systems. Absolutely, if you need a new one, Lennox Home Comfort System, they're offering up to seventeen hundred dollars in rebates on a new system. Find out more about it, call Ramsey Heating and Electric at six seven eight zero four five nine, or go online, ramsesonline.com. Terms and conditions apply. See dealer for details at Ramsey Heating and Electric. Really, really good people. Okay, what else have I got cooking here in the time remaining this morning? I'll tell you real fast, we're going to have Dave Beagle on the program at nine oh six, then at nine thirty, one of our favorite guests, and we get a lot of requests for him to come back on the program on occasion, and that's Gregory Wrightstone. And every single day, new stories are coming out by the liberal left and the Democrats trying to concoct some kind of a witch's brew for all of us to follow in lockstep behind them in their brooms, to follow them over the edge on climate change. I mean, it's almost to the point now where it's completely laughable, and we're going to have, as I said, we're going to have Gregory Wrightstone on our program a little bit later on this morning. I had a story I wanted to share with you real fast. It was all about how now they're starting to blame the mass caravans coming up here to the United States on global warming and climate change. I mean, they will come up with anything and everything to try to get people's opinions and people's hearts to follow them like lemmings with the idea that climate change is real. I'm just going to reiterate this. Yeah, we might be in cyclical climate change. The earth has been that way ever since God created the earth, but for the Democrats to lead us into the pits of hell with them having their hand on the thermostat, you better think twice. Let's see, what else have we got? Oh, quickly, I've got to get some of these public service announcements on. I love this one. Alert, alert, the Bingo Games, every Friday night at the Minidoka County Senior Center, and they wanted me to be sure and tell you that, starting on April twenty-sixth, they'll open the doors at four P.M., games and ticket sales start at five. Caller, good morning, I've got a minute. Go real fast.
Good morning, Zeb. I just wanted to say, yeah, the climate changes four times a year for us, so there you have it.
Okay. Rodney, thank you, old buddy. I appreciate your call. Thank you. Have a good day, sir.
Every time of the year, we have climate change here in this area.
All right, my friend. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We talked about the Bingo Games, and then I want to mention this one more time, we're going to have the great big Zeb's Lunch Bunch tomorrow at Denny's Restaurant. Now, haven't you been there? Well, we urge you to be a part of it. Yep, eleven thirty, oh, hurry out of here, jump in the pick 'em up truck, and vroom, over to Burley in time for the eleven thirty start. And we're very patriotic, and we make no bones against it. We start with the pledge, the prayer, the national anthem, and we're proud of it. Like to have you there, and we've got a lot of door prizes to give away from Walmart, Smith Foods, Hanson Mortuary, Stokes Groceries, Doug Martin, Denny's. Thank you, thank you very much. And like I said, that's going to be at Denny's Restaurant, America's diner, and we'll be there tomorrow at eleven thirty, Zeb's Lunch Bunch. Don't you miss it. We'd like you to be a part of the program. Well, I appreciate your calls this morning, and right now, we're going to take a little break, send it back over to Wheels, and let CBS News come in and mess up everything we've put together over the last hour, and we'll be back in about six minutes with Dave Beagle. Don't you go away. Wheels, it's all yours. you go away. Wheels, it's all yours. Oh, good morning, good morning, good morning. On a kind of an overcast morning, it was blue skies earlier, but, uh, the weather forecast not calling for any rain this morning. Zeb at the Ranch, I'm Zeb Bell with our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Lushwab Tire Centers, all seven locations serving you with a great big spring tire sale. And of course, don't forget some of our great, great advertisers like Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation at twelve sixty-three Bennett Avenue, Suite Two in Burley, helping you get back to being you. Right now, this good word for Western Way Services. Oh, my goodness, don't forget all the family reunions and the picnics and the graduation ceremonies, all of this around the corner. And you've gotta check on who's bringing the baked beans, who's bringing the potato salad. Uh-oh, who lined up the porta potties? Well, you'd better take care of that today. If you got a great big gathering, porta potties from Western Way Services always at your disposal. Call them today at seven three four six nine six nine. They are waiting to serve you at Western Way Services. Don't forget on Mondays at ten thirty, Vicky's Country Garden. Oh, my goodness, wonderful, beautiful lady over in Paul. We have Green Thumbs, Dirty Knees and Vicky's Country Garden with the best of gardening tips. And if you have any questions or whatever you'd like me to relay to Vicky, just give them to me. Send them on the email, zebattheranch@hotmail.com. Want to remind you too about our friends over at Patterson's. Holy cow, they've got all the TVs, Samsung, Sony, Toshiba LG TVs. I mean, they've got all for your enjoyment. You get into your humble abode at night and kinda rest back in that recliner. Oh, you can just enjoy. And they've got home theater systems. They've got all your electronics needs. Not sure what you need or how to operate it? Hey, Curtis and Lorena, they're there with a staff that can help you at Patterson's, four twenty-one East Main in Burley. Patterson's in Burley, six seven eight six nine nine seven. And they're open Monday through Saturday, nine to six. You stop over and see them today. Oh, by the way, I wanna remind you too that on Easter Sunday, Perkins Restaurant and Bakery is gonna be open, uh-huh, at eight hundred North Overland in Burley. Oh, go in and have a great big Easter dinner or breakfast. And they've got all the fresh strawberry entrees, like the fresh strawberry pies. Oh, it's gonna be, I love strawberry. And it's all there at Perkins Restaurant and Bakery, eight hundred North Overland in Burley, where they say they believe in being best buds with your taste buds at Perkins. Really, really nice people. One more good word before we get the man that's standing in the starting gate chomping on the bit, Dave Beagle. Stand by. Don't forget Hanson Mortuary, our dear friends over at seven ten Sixth Street in Rupert. Joel Heward, family, staff, serving you and your family. And they want to be always providing the families they serve with the best possible support and comfort and always with the highest ethical standards with unquestioned integrity. Please remember Hanson Mortuary at seven ten Sixth Street in Rupert. Number to call, four three six five six three six. And remember this too, Joel Heward also serving you at Morris and Payne Funeral Home on East Main in Burley. It is Wednesday morning, and that means we get a chance to talk to an old friend of ours back in Indianapolis, Indiana, and that's Dave Beagle. Good morning, my friend. How are you?
I'm doing fine, Zeb. Hope so you are too.
Well, I am, but I've got a little concern this morning, and I want you to talk about it a little bit. Your neighbor down the road in South Bend, Indiana, Pete Buttigieg, or Gig or Jig or whatever they call his name, the mayor of South Bend a couple of years ago, well, he's decided to run for president. He is openly gay and married to a junior high school teacher by the name of Jason Glazeman. And I just have a lot of concerns. This guy's getting a lot of traction. What are your thoughts about Pete Buttigieg?
Well, he's up the road from, it's not down the road.
Well, whatever.
But, uh, I, I think he's just a part of this whole lot thing. I mean, they've got the Democrats, you know, they got over twenty-two people at different positions that are gonna run, say they're gonna run for president. And I think that, quite honestly, that these people are, are being put in this place by the far left and their supporters like, you know, the unions and Soros and other people. And they're trying to get these people up to divide this country and, you know, try and get somebody in there that's very, very radical so they can bring the country down.
Well, and I'm sure that we're gonna find out a lot more about who is putting a lot of the front money up for his campaign. Buttigieg has raised quite a bit of money in the last couple of days and has gone to the forefront. He might be the, kinda the flavor of the week, if you will, for the Democrats. I hope so. I hope he's nothing more than a shooting star. But you know, in his personal life bio, it says Buttigieg is a devout Christian. And in the next paragraph, it talks about how he's gay and married, another gay. Uh, how can you be a devout Christian and live that lifestyle?
Well, you know, they, they talk out of both sides of the mouth, Zeb. That's who they are. And, uh, you know, people gotta understand that, that they'll say one thing and that, and you know, they're, they're not being honest with the American public. And I think that's what people are gonna discover is we go down the line with this group of people.
Absolutely. I don't know if you heard about this or not, uh, 'cause you get to your office early in the morning and you put a lot of hours in. But a couple of days ago, there were just a very few people of dissenting voice in Laguna Beach, California. And they went to the city council and the police department and they had an outrage and they said, why, you can't have the red, white and blue of the flag on your police cars. Why, it's too aggressive and it intimidates people that are not from our country. Well, something happened last night, David, that I want you to comment on. They had a town or a city council meeting and literally hundreds and hundreds of people that live in Laguna Beach, California showed up. And guess what? They demanded that the police force keep the colors of the red, white and blue on their squad cars. And after making their demands, they started standing up and singing the national anthem.
Well, Zeb, I, I really believe that people across the country are beginning to wake up, understand what's going on. And as I've told you before, there's, I've talked to a lot of Democrats that are not happy with the far left side of their party and what's going on. And I think people are beginning to realize that they have to stand up and protect our company, our country and support it. And I think we're gonna see more of this stuff. There, there was another one on the flag where, I forget where it was now, but there was something going on and they laid the flag on the ground.
Oh.
And a bunch of people got upset about that. You know, you don't lay the flag on the ground. And this, I'm, I'm hoping that what people see with all these, you know, Democrats by the dozen, I mean, there's over two dozen people, you know, the business people, mayors, people in Congress and the Senate and other that are saying they're running for president. And I think people are seeing these people like the mayor up in South Bend and listening to what they're having to say and Bernie Sanders and all that. And they're, they're beginning to realize these people aren't for America.
You know, I'm proud of this country. It's, like I said first hour, it has afforded me every opportunity that I could ever have wanted if I just put forth the effort to try. This United States of America is something that when I put my hand over my heart for the Pledge of Allegiance or the National Anthem, I really mean it. And for those to diminish it and had the people of Laguna Beach, California, the naysayers, of which they were very much of a minority, had they won, there was a person on television early this morning that made the comment, and I agree with this person, it would have been a trendsetter that perhaps there might have been no American flag leading the parade on Independence Day, the Fourth of July, or no American flag at sporting events, et cetera. It could have been a trendsetter, but boy, the people in Laguna Beach, I salute them for standing up and telling these other nitwits to crawl back in their hole.
I agree with you a hundred percent. And, you know, as I talk to people across the country and business people and other people, you know, when they do the right things, I support them all the time. And I keep them, tell them to keep standing up and protect our country because it's the greatest country on earth and God put us here for a reason.
You know, Dave, you're close to politics and you know personally Vice President Mike Pence. What was the great big mess with Taylor University back in your neck of the woods, a Christian school, I thought, trying to revoke Mike Pence from speaking at their commencement?
I don't know. I have not had a chance to really dive down into that and find out all what's going on. I do know that there's a lot of people that weren't very happy about it. And I think it, you know, what we'll find out, it's the education system being controlled, um, by the left and the liberals that, you know, have been trying to infiltrate this country for the last fifty years or so by, you know, educating our students in the wrong way. But, um, I saw on the news this morning, just a brief thing on Fox where they said that some of those kids down there weren't very happy about it.
Absolutely. In another event that's gonna take place tomorrow, and that's the releasing of the Mueller report. And I don't know about you and your thoughts on William Barr, Attorney General. But this poor guy, he stepped into a snake pit when he was named Attorney General. In the beginning, both sides of the aisle respected him for all the work he's done in his life. But then all of a sudden, the Democrats thought, oh, we got a new poster boy of somebody that we can really hate and we can point the finger at and say that he is nothing more than Trump's lapdog. How does this guy win? He's not gonna sacrifice all of his life and public service to try to do something illegal? What are your thoughts?
No, I, I think he'll be pretty straight and upfront about it. But, you know, it's the typical intimidation tactics of the left. And, you know, he's gotta step back and realize that and not let them get to him and, you know, keep his backbone and report the right things and move forward. And, you know, we'll, we'll see. I understand that Trump's personal attorney, Rudy Giuliani, has said they're working on a counter report to be released shortly after the redacted Mueller materials release. So tomorrow's gonna be an interesting day.
I wanna go to a subject that you, I think, in my opinion, are, that's your strong suit. I don't know anybody on my program that knows more about labor unions and problems with the unions than you do. Uh, there were some comments made the other night during the town hall, pardon me, with Bernie Sanders. And then I heard some comments the other day from Beto, I refuse to call him Beto, I'm gonna call him Robbie O'Rourke, where they wanna see the unions become more aggressive and take over the minimum wage jobs and turn them into living wage jobs. That's where you come in, buddy, because you know the unions and their heavy-handedness. Talk to us about that.
Well, you know, the fight for fifteen, you know, that's been going on for years. You know, the SEIU is behind that. And the truth is, at the end of the day, they could care less what the people make. They just use this stuff as a slogan. So, you know, we're gonna pay people better and make sure they get benefits and on and on and on. But at the end of the day, the money is just for their own pocketbook and for their political agendas. And the Democrats are pushing them hard because the Democrats know they need a lot of money for the twenty twenty election. And what you're really seeing, and there was an article that came out on this the other day, on the fight for fifteen and the minimum wage of fifteen and stuff like that, is what it's really done is it's reduced a lot of jobs because businesses are going to, you know, mechanical things and, you know, new stuff, technology, to reduce the number of employees. And because at the end of the day, they still can only spend so much money and, you know, be a profitable business. And they have to be profitable to keep reinvesting and growing and, you know, replacing equipment as it wears out and stuff like that. And people don't realize that. And these businesses, they don't wanna have to do this because, you know, now you've got kids in high school and other things that are trying to get jobs to start out with and have money while they're going through school or college and that. And a lot of these jobs are being eliminated.
You know, the way you said that, it was so clear and precise. And I got to thinking about the town hall the other night on television with Bernie Sanders. Fox News hosted that town hall with Wild Haired Bernie. And they had him, they being the moderators, they had him on the ropes on five or six different occasions to where he could not answer the questions and he poo-pooed it along. And that was one of them, talking about the minimum wage jobs, pricing themselves out of existence, and Bernie just skirted the issue and jumped to something else. And Fox News Brett Baer and Martha McCallum, they should have jumped on him for that and nobody pursued it.
No, and they won't because, you know, the, the media and that and everybody is controlled by the unions. And they're not gonna do anything that gets them in trouble because they don't want the unions coming after their, after their advertisers.
We've got a caller with a question for you, Dave. Stand by. Caller, you're on the air. Quickly, please.
Yes. Uh, I, I don't understand how people, when they go to McDonald's in high school and they earn a minimum wage to get where they're going, that how some of them think that's a lifetime job. That's, you know, that's, that's not a career job. That's a starter job to get you going in the workforce. And it amazes me how many people will try and encourage that as being a career. And I think this emphasis needs to be less on colleges and more on technical institutes to where you learn a trade, you need that trade, and we will pay for that trade instead of flipping whoppers. I'll let you go.
I really liked that comment. Dave, respond to the caller, please.
Well, yeah, he's right. And the thing is though, a lot of these people and the, and the younger kids and that, they're, and they're all being brainwashed again. You know, when the SEIU came after and tried to force unionize all the major cleaning companies across the country, the, they were going into people and say, oh, we're gonna, you're gonna make this and you're gonna make that. And we'll make sure you get this and all this stuff. And it sounds good. And, you know, and all they're doing is just to get the votes and support of these people. And, you know, it's what these people don't understand is, and I don't know, Zeb, but when I was in college, you know, you know, I played sports and of course I had to go to school and that. But that's back in the day when you still had people that pumped gas at gas stations. And, you know, I, I'd go over almost every night and pump gas for a couple hours and make, what, about two bucks an hour, something like that. And, but, you know, it's a start. You have to start somewhere and you have to work hard and persevere and move forward and move upward. And that's what this is all about. But the unions and don't wanna let you know that.
Well, the caller made an excellent point that I think is being diminished and it's being scoffed at. And Bernie Sanders is one that I think should have been having his feet held close to the fire on this. But again, the moderators goofed the other night when he said that he wanted to see the minimum wage raised to where it was a living wage. Right there, I've got some animus against this because I, like you, believe that you've got to have introductory to the workforce jobs. Those are not jobs that are gonna bring you home six, seven thousand dollars a month. They're not those jobs that you can go to the country club on. They are jobs, minimum wage jobs to learn how to be in the workforce. And I'll say this, prove yourself and your net worth as to whether you're worthy of more money.
Well, that's exactly right. And that's the incentive for people to work hard and educate themselves and do the right things, you know, have integrity and understand how to get along with other people and, and all that. And that's what helps move you up through life. And you, people need to understand that's the incentive. It's not just saying we're gonna give it to you. Again, this is just the left coming out, you know, brainwashing people, getting in their heads, saying, oh, yeah, we're gonna do those for you. So they get their votes and they, you know, can get reelected come twenty twenty.
You know, Dave, I've only got about four minutes left and I gotta have you comment on this. I sat there the other night and I listened to this man, Bernie Sanders, and his one size fits all, single payer Medicare system. We, everybody needs to have healthcare. And he didn't say one time, not one time, nor did the moderators really push him about, oh, oh, well, how's it going to be paid for? Who's going to gain? Who's going to suffer? And what kind of coverage are you going to get? There's never been any conversation about that.
I, I know, Zeb, and you probably get tired of hearing me say this, but this is what they do. They just throw this stuff out there and they don't have any details or support or anything. And, um, you know, it's, it's like, uh, you know, when we fought the SEIU and that, uh, even to this day, our people make more than the union people do, that, you know, the cleaning companies here in Indianapolis that they, they organized and that. And, um, it's because we try to do the right things and take care of people, uh, the unions are out there just for the union dues money and that. And, uh, I, I got to tell you this other story real quick too, is, um, it just, I just saw an article on it today. Um, they were talking about, uh, cleaning, and of course, you know, we're in the cleaning industry, and movie theaters across the country and how bad it is. And the reason it is, is because, um, movie theaters are using, uh, uh, contractors who are subcontracting it to independent contractors that are, um, almost all Hispanic people that they're paying $5 an hour or two.
Oh, my goodness.
And you got to understand this. And, and the reason this is happening is because the Democratic Party wants these people to come across the border and work in these type of jobs and then vote for the Democratic Party. And, uh, you know, that's what this is all about. And, you know, and eventually someday the unions hope that they'll unionize them.
Absolutely.
And, uh, it's, it's terrible when you look at, uh, uh, you know, movie theaters across the country using, uh, contractors that are subcontracting it to independent contractors and they're getting paid $5 an hour.
Amen. The proof is in the pudding. There's my friend back in Indianapolis, Indiana, a real valuable asset to this program with his political analyism. I like that word. I don't know if it is a word, but I like it. Anyway, Dave Vigo, Indianapolis, Indiana. God bless you, man. And to you and your family, Happy Easter.
Well, Happy Easter and have a Happy Easter weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Good man right there. And I'm all the better for knowing him and having him on the program. Uh, we got a bunch of bills we got to pay real quick. And I want to remind everybody again about Ramsey Heating and Electric and Lennox teamed up on your home comfort systems. That's right. If you need a new Lennox home comfort system, they are offering up to possibly $1,700 in rebates on a new system. Check it out today. Call Ramsey Heating and Electric at 678-0459 or visit ramseysonline.com. Terms and conditions apply. See the dealer for details at Ramsey Heating and Electric and Lennox. Really good people. Also, when I talk about good people, I got to rare back and give a great big shout out to our friends at Lee's Furniture Floors and more. Jeff and his entire crew, and they're having what they call kind of a spring clearance event. Yep, they've got limited quantities on various items and they're going to let them go all out the door at prices that are unheard of. I mean, they've got a flooring closeout, they've got a warehouse mattress wipeout, everything must go. I'll, I'll give you an example. Listen to this. This will knock your Tony llamas off. Simmons Beauty Rest Sleep Mattresses, queen size was $9.99, now just $3.99. You should be a galloping over there right now at 459 Overland Inn Burleigh, Lee's Furniture Floors and More. They are waiting to serve you. Wow. Save a lot of money and get over there to see our friends at Lee's. And real quick also, I want to remind you that, oh, we got a birthday girl. Got a birthday girl. And she is one of the nicest ladies and helps us so much along with her husband Jimmy at our lunch bunch. Frida Flowers, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, Frida Flowers. Thank you for all you do. Want to remind you too about Let's Ride. Ho, ho, ho. Crank it up, boys. Let's head for the hills on a four wheeler from Let's Ride. They've got all the four wheelers, they've got all the accessories, they've got a super service department to keep you running at Let's Ride. 270 Highway 24 between Rupert and the World. They're open Monday through Friday, nine to six, Saturday's nine to four, and I urge you to stop over. Walk in that showroom and go, holy moly, how did they get all this in here? They're waiting for you right now at Let's Ride, 270 Highway 24 between Rupert and the World. And remember, it's true, this is where the fun is sold at Let's Ride. Wow. I think we better go right to our guest, and I am blessed to have him on the program again. He is the author of the book called Inconvenient Facts, The Science That Al Gore Doesn't Want You to Know. Gregory Wrightstone, how are you?
Oh, very good. Glad to be back on with you, Zeb.
No, no, no. It's always my pleasure because you add some sanity to an insane world that gets worse every day. I, I want to start things off by asking you this. How in the world did the Washington Post come up with this theory that the border crisis with all the caravanners and all the illegal aliens is due to climate change?
Oh, my God, I've not seen that. That was probably today's alarmist scuttlebutt.
Yeah, I've got it right here in my hand. I got it right here in my hand, and here's the quote.
I can't really respond. I'm not sure what the reasoning is behind it. I mean, we've heard that, that the war in Syria was caused by climate change and some other conflicts around there. They're, they're trying to conflate every, any possible, uh, negative situation to climate change. It's crazy. People are catching on to it.
And let me read you.
You can only do this and cry wolf too many times before people just go, go, come on, stop it.
I know. It's absolutely insane. Let me read you the paragraph that was sent to me from the Washington Post. Uh, quote, "Because it, it's becoming increasingly clear that climate change has played a significant part in deepening the extreme poverty and insecurity that compels many to head north." According to the World Bank, "Climate change could lead to at least 1.4 million people leaving their homes in Mexico and Central America over the next three decades." There you have it from the Washington Post.
Oh, well, you didn't tell me it was the Washington Post.
Yeah, I did.
Now we have to believe it. Oh, come on. I, I, I have no idea what they're getting at there. I have no idea why people would, would be abandoning their, their homes due to climate change. Uh, if anything, the agricultural situation down there should be improving. We see it's improving worldwide. Uh, perhaps they're moving here because the climate's getting better up here and we need more workers in the fields because we're growing that much more, uh, in terms of agricultural products. I could believe that. Maybe the climate change is, 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 as you know, I, I'm a big proponent of the rising temperatures and increasing CO2 are, are benefiting the earth and humanity. And that, that relates right to increased crop growth. So, yeah, maybe we're drawing people up from Central America because we need more people to harvest this bountiful, uh, food that we're, we're growing because of climate change. I like that spin on it.
Gregory, let me ask you this. And on one of the information sheets regarding you coming on the program this morning, uh, it cited Beto O'Rourke, I refuse to call him Beto, I'm going to call him Robbie O'Rourke, uh, proposed in Iowa that the United States allow farmers to give up their fair share of crops to help fight climate change. Please pick it up from that point and tell us what you think.
Well, again, this is, this is the assumption that climate change is going to lead to famine, food shortages and starvation, where just the opposite is occurring, as, as we just talked about. Um, if we, if, if we're grow, we're growing and just about every nation on earth's, uh, food production, except those in some of the war-torn areas, but that has nothing to do with climate change. Uh, but, uh, nearly every nation on earth, their crop production has been, has been increasing significantly. We break records year after year after year. So what, what they're doing, what Beto's, uh, talking about here, again, he's looking and referencing things like the, the World Wildlife Fund or the, uh, National Climate Assessment, uh, where, where they take failed climate models that overpredict warming and then project what might happen 30 or 50 or 80 years in the future, uh, and go, oh, well, they're predicting that's, that, that crops will fail. Uh, but if we look at what's actually happening in the real world, we see, uh, again, we're breaking records time and time again for, for crop production and growth. So, uh, he's, he, I, I would assume, I can't read his mind, and I did see that article, it didn't say there exactly what he was referencing, but I, I read into it that it would be, uh, using these, these prognostications and basically rank speculation about what might happen decades into the future rather than what's actually happening.
Gregory, let me ask you this question, and I think you and I've talked about this before, but I want you to reiterate your position on this. Um, I've been listening very, very carefully and I take notes at least two or three different times a day to various shows, uh, and radio programs that might have some of these people like Kamala Harris, Cory Booker, Bernie Sanders, et cetera, on as guests. Not once, not one time, Greg, have I heard any one of the so-called hosts on these programs really pin these people down on, oh, okay, you're against fossil fuels and you want to see all transportation stopped, you want to see all the private cars, uh, basically parked in the garage, never to be used again, our transportation sources would be null and void. Not one of these people ever bring up the fact that how are we going to produce food for not only this country, but for the world if all of a sudden tomorrow the light switch goes off and they say no more fossil fuels?
Well, they're, they, they, the reason they don't respond to it is because you, you know as well as I do and every single one of your listeners, it just, it ain't going to happen. You can't do it. How do you get the, how do you get, if you could grow the, the crops without fossil fuel powered tractors and combines and harvesters, how do you get it to market? Horse drawn, ox driven carriages and, and wagons? I mean, it, it doesn't make, you're right, it doesn't make sense. And there's, there's no logical explanation to it. And we just saw Elizabeth Warren yesterday, uh, ranting about that she wants, she decided yesterday, announced that she was going to put a ban on all future energy leases on federal properties. Uh, we're going to ban that. She says, I can do that as president, and that's what I'm going to do. We're going to ban leasing on federal properties, uh, which is, that controls most of the, that'd be the Gulf of Mexico, many of the, uh, big properties across the Western United States. Uh, it wouldn't do anything, most of the, most of the shale development with fracking, uh, is taking place on private lands, and that's why it's going great guns because the federal government can't get, get its paws into it and throw sand in the gears. Uh, so, but that, that was just one example, just yesterday with Elizabeth Warren, which is, which is crazy. Because we, we run, we need affordable, abundant and reliable energy, and the only way we're going to get that is through, uh, nuclear, fossil fuels, coal or natural gas fired electric. Um, hydroelectric, of course, is a wonderful renewable resource, but I don't think we're going to see another hydroelectric dam created or built in the United States for some time.
You know, the thing is though, and I don't mean to beat this dead horse, but, uh, I think it's worth elaborating on. These people like O'Rourke and Kamala Harris and Elizabeth Warren and Bernie Sanders, when they're asked about their stance on the Green New Deal, they all jump up and say, oh, it's great because in 12 years we're going to burn up. And they keep damning and condemning fossil fuels and anybody else that believes in fossil fuels is an idiot and a bigot. But yet they never are really pushed by the talk show moderators and hosts about, okay, what about food production? You like a steak? You like your veggies? You like anything else that you like to eat at night? Where's all that going to be coming from and how is it going to be produced and get to the market? I think they need to be pressured more on this, but nobody is bringing it up.
Yeah, yeah. Well, get them on some of the, there's only one station out there that I've, I've, I've been watching one American news a bit, uh, but, but between them and Fox News, they're not, you're just not going to get it because they've all bought into this hook, line and sinker, this notion of, of, uh, catastrophic man-made warming. And that's, that's what they're going off of. It's, as you know, we, we've talked many times, I just don't see it happening. I see a world that's thriving and prospering. I see humanity benefiting from, from, uh, climate change, just the opposite of what we're being told.
You know, you see this and you say this on my program, Greg, but I got to ask you this. Certainly you must be like me, concerned to the point where if the needle were from one to 10, I'm concerned at about a five and a half right now to these people like O'Rourke and Harris and others and Bernie Sanders. My goodness, what if, underline the word if, they are elected as president? Wow, what happens then?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's a scary, and, and I'll, I'll just take you back. It, it could happen. I mean, we can, we've seen such leftward drift in this country. Uh, we just, 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 just to point out what happened here, I'm calling you from Pittsburgh this morning, and we had a state senate race right here in my district, uh, where a young 41-year-old entrepreneur with a PhD in chemical engineering was just marvelous, ran against an avowed Democrat socialist. And, I mean, and she won.
Wow.
And she won. And this is just a basic, I mean, this is not, we're not inner city Pittsburgh, we're suburbs, and to have that happen, I was just, it, it, it shook my confidence in, in what may or may not happen. To have that happen here in my own state senate district, to have a, a Democrat socialist, like we're talking about with these others, can win that race, and, uh, it, it, it shook me to the core. And, uh, to find out that something like that could actually happen. So I hear people saying, oh, we'll, we'll never elect a socialist like that in the United States. I'm not so sure.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it's, I'm not as confident after this last election we just had here that, that that might not happen. And it's crazy.
Well, the green movement, thanks to Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez and some of the others, and then Bernie picking up on it the other night during the town hall and saying, whoa, if we don't do something in 12 years, we're all going to burn up. People, I looked around the audience at that town hall when the camera panned the audience after, uh, Sanders said that. And, and a lot of them, and they were mostly all, I would estimate 30 or younger of those ilks, they stood up and they waved their hands and they cheered. What is the matter with our education system that these kids, these millennials, do not understand the pitfalls and the pratfalls that are going to occur if we go with that kind of stupidity?
Yeah, yeah. And, and we see that. I'm, uh, I'm just putting together commentary right now, there's a, uh, a movement going on here, uh, promoting the Green New Deal. They're moving, they're going to go to 15 cities around the United States and they're going to promote this, uh, this Green New Deal. I'm, I've got posters, I've, I've printed up, I'm going to, I'm going to head to the closest one to me, which is Philadelphia, and hold my big poster, I love CO2 sign up. Uh, but, uh, it might get a little dicey for me, but that's all right. They need to be confronted. Uh, but, and what we see in these rallies, all these, uh, young, earlier than 20 years, younger than 20 years old, uh, socialists that stand up. Uh, but I did have one personal, uh, success here. Our, I talked to my son, a former socialist, who tells me, no, I'm, you know what? I'm no longer socialist. I'm, he's, he's kind of pulled away from it.
Oh, my.
So we, we had a little bit of success in our family.
Oh, my. I mean, dad must have been very proud and deemed like a Cheshire Cat.
Yeah. Yeah, well, well, I was, you may not realize, I was a member of the Socialist Workers Party when I was in college.
Oh, my.
It's an easy thing to do. Uh, but I learned, I, it was Ronald Reagan and the Ronald Reagan commentaries that dragged me out of the darkness. And so, you know, Ronald Reagan's my hero because day after day I'd sit and listen to his commentaries and every day I'd go, yeah, he's right. And it caused me to reevaluate, uh, my thinking. And as these people age, I think that a lot of these people will do the same.
Absolutely. We've got a caller with a question, a comment. Go ahead, caller, you're on the air, please.
Well, whether or not it's global warming or, you know, abortion, Unplanned, the movie has taken off and done so unbelievably well that it's growing, it's, it's got more people going now than it did in its opening weekend. And, uh, see, some of these people have seen this movie 18 times and taken their friends. And I realize, but you were talking about being a liberal and believing in global warming and abortion and whatever the hell else these sorry people think. You know, Greenland, which was always icier than Iceland, and it was named Greenland because they wanted to attract people there and pool them by calling it Greenland, has so much ice on the North Pole in Greenland that it's never, it's got more ice now than it has in recorded history than, if I'm not mistaken. And, and see, this is a little tidbit of information on global warming that is never brought up. See, when you- up. See, when you, when you investigate whether or not it's abortion or global warming, and you sit down and really learn whether or not it was Ronald Reagan, or whoever, and you say to yourself, oh, wow, I've been, people have been lying to me and misleading me. Well, it's up to each person to know better, but in today's world, we have smartphones, and we're dumber than hell. Well, hang on.
Respond to the caller, please.
Something's right. Now, Greenland was during the, what we call the medieval warm period, is when the Vikings landed there, and they were, we know it was warmer back then. There's, there's a lot of both historical and scientific information that tells us that Greenland was warmer. The, the ice cores confirm that, that it was warmer there. And they were, I mean, the Vikings were growing barley on Greenland for, for crying out loud, and there are still Vikings buried several feet deep in the permafrost, so it, it had to have been warmer at some point. And I, back then, before we got into the vicious and crippling cold of what was called the Little Ice Age here, and we've been coming, the warming trend we're in right now thankfully brought us out of that death dealing cold of the, of what's called the Little Ice Age.
Gregory, one final thought here this morning, before I let you go. I'm sure that you speak to various groups and individuals, and what's the response with your message that you're trying to portray in your book, Inconvenient Facts? I mean, do people want to stand up and arbitrate with you, or do they go, oh, my goodness, I didn't know that, and you change their minds? What, what's the response?
It's the latter. I'm, I'm, every word I've spoken to date, if they're on, a lot of people are coming out, there's a great thirst for knowledge about the subject, and I present information that they've never heard, and it's science based, fact based information. And I'm, I'm warmly, warmly, warmly received. I get, I get very, very little pushback. And this is from scientific groups. Last group I spoke to was the Ohio Geological Society, and there wasn't a 97% consensus, there was 100% consensus. Everyone in the room, all scientists agreed basically with what I was saying, and, and we talked later, after the talk, about how geologists is in particular are probably the highest percentage of skeptics there are, because we look, we put this information in these, the long-term context. We're looking at many, many thousands or millions of years, rather than just looking at the last 50 or 80 or 100 years, which is dangerous to do. We need that long-term geologic context to put what we're seeing today in the big, big long-term perspective.
Please tell us quickly, where can people that are listening right now obtain your book, Inconvenient Facts, The Science That Al Gore Doesn't Want You to Know?
It's available Barnes and Noble, Amazon, you can go to my website, inconvenientfacts.xyz, and we can, you can get a, use the code 1776 to get $5 off. That'd be inconvenientfacts.xyz.
Gregory Wrightstone, you're always welcome on this program. Thank you so much for what you do, and I'll keep up the fight with you. Thank you for being on the program.
Thank you, Zeb.
You bet, sir. Thank you. Always enjoy having him on, a man of truth in a world today that just wants to lead us by the nose in believing in climate change slash global warming, and they want to lead us over a cliff. We're going to fight. We're going to keep on fighting, because we are right. We better get the weather forecast on here, we won't be anything. The weather brought to you this hour by our friends at Phillips Oaks Goodwin Crane and Company. They had one day a rest or so, so we're going to tell them to get back to work today. They have been providing accounting services to the Minnetka area for well over 50 years. The best working for you, your family, and your business, Phillips Oaks Goodwin Crane and Company. Offices in Burley and Rupert, I urge you to get ahold of them. The best of tax return preparation, tax planning, financial statement preparation, business consulting, all of this and so much more with Phillips Oaks Goodwin Crane and Company. And right now, they bring you the weather.
Going to be a beautiful day as we hit midweek. Here's a look at your weather forecast. We're expecting sunny skies with a high of 60, winds out of the west right around 15 miles an hour. Gusts high is 30 miles an hour. For tonight, mostly clear skies, expecting a low of 38. Tomorrow, another beautiful day, sunny skies, high of 67, mostly clear and 42 for Thursday night. By Friday, sunny and 77. Unfortunately, as we head on into the weekend, we are expecting some rain showers, mostly cloudy skies, and highs are going to be in the upper 50s. That's a look at your weather forecast for Zeb at the Ranch.
Oh, there you go. Gina, thank you very much for the weather brought to everybody by the best professionals serving you with accounting services to the Minnetka area, Phillips Oaks Goodwin Crane and Company. Please, please, call them today, let them help you. With offices in Burley and Rupert, Phillips Oaks Goodwin Crane and Company. Wow, don't forget, we've got the Idaho Fishing Game Report coming up at 9 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock this morning. Hey, turn your clock on, Zeb, there you go. And Craig White's going to be with us this morning. I think, as a matter of fact, he just walked in the door. While I'm waiting for your call, give me a jingle right now at 436-2244. I'd like to remind you also about our friends at Cameron and Siemens Insurance, Highway 24 in Rupert. Oh, my goodness, life insurance, health insurance, employee benefits, they know and they want to help you. They're very devoted and dedicated to serving you, your family, and your business. And I urge you to pick up the phone and make the call for an appointment, 436-4424. That number again, 436-4424. Cameron and Siemens Insurance, Highway 24 in Rupert, really good folks. Now, I want to remind you of a couple of things. Number one, lunch bunch tomorrow, Zeb's Lunch Bunch at Denny's Restaurant, America's Diner at 611 North Overland in Burley. Our thanks again for all the gift certificates we're going to give away from Walmarts, Miss Foods, Handsome Mortuary, Stokes Groceries, Doug Martin, Denny's, thank you, thank you, thank you. Starts at 11:30, and we'd like to have increased numbers there tomorrow. Call your friends and neighbors, your relatives, and everybody, bail into the old van and come on down to Denny's Restaurant, 611 North Overland in Burley tomorrow for Zeb's Lunch Bunch. Got you covered. Want to remind you too about our friend Jeff. Hello, Jeff out at Magic Valley Irrigation at 4040 East, 500 South of Burley. Do you know that they've been offering irrigation system service and repair to the Burley area since way back in 1978? And they can also manufacture all the wheel line elbows. I'll tell you, their specialists are ready to serve you. How do you get ahold of them? Just call, 678-1301, 678-1301. Magic Valley Irrigation, 4040 East, 500 South of Burley. You call Jeff and the crew to work for you today. Really good people. All right, I've got time for a couple of calls. Give me a jingle on the landline, 436-2244. One, scared me to death. I forgot to turn my cellphone on mute. Woo, turn that puppy off. I don't know about you, but you know, this brings to mind something I was going to mention earlier this morning. Last night, in the span of 15 minutes, from 6:30 until quarter to 7, my wife and I had five, five of those ridiculously annoying robocalls, and all on my cellphone. And I, boy, I'll tell you what, I've never been more frustrated in my life. We have got to the point on our other phone, the home phone, that if we don't recognize the number, sorry, we're not picking up. We're just going to mute it, or turn it off, or hang up on it. It's got to the point where I'm not going to keep chasing a parked car. You get up, you grab the phone, hi, I have important news for you. Or the lady with this brazen voice will say, don't hang up, I've got valuable information for you. Valuable information, my foot. Anyway. Don't forget too, coming up on Saturday, the benefit dinner for JR Strong. It's going to be at the Rupert Senior Center at 702 11th Street in Rupert, and it's going to start at 4:00 PM on Saturday afternoon, all the way till 6:00. And they're going to have dinner, and they're going to have raffles and drawings, and I just urge you to be in attendance. JR has done so much to help others and other groups in this area. Well, it's about high time that we turned around and said thank you to him. Benefit Dinner for JR Strong at the Rupert Senior Center, coming up on this Saturday from 4 to 6:00, and we will look for you there, okay? Let's see what else have we got. Tomorrow on the program, don't forget, we're going to have Rita Ramsey, The Chamber Report. I believe Lyden Crane's going to be doing our Chamber Report tomorrow. Cassia County School Days, and we've got Jeff from Lee's Furniture coming on. And at the end of the program tomorrow at about, oh, 10:32, right in that area, it's going to be a very solemn tribute to the Easter weekend. This is Holy Week, and of course, tomorrow, Maundy Thursday, Friday, Good Friday, Sunday, of course, Easter Sunday. And I want to, on behalf of Deanna and myself, extend to you and your family the very, very best of a happy Easter. Right now, we're going to send it across the river and through the snow, well, through the desert. And Wheels is the man that's going to plug in CBS News. We'll be back in about six minutes. They're playing the music, which should tell me if I were paying attention, that I'm on the air. Good morning again, Hour Number Three, Zeb at the Ranch, I'm Zeb Bell, with our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Leschwab Tire Centers, all seven locations, serving you with a big spring tire sale going on right now. And some of our great advertisers, like Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation at 1263 Bennett Avenue in, in Burley, Suite Two, helping you get back to being you. Really good people. Before we go to the start of our program that we have once a month with the Fishing Game, we're going to also remind you that I know some folks that do a job that you don't want to do. You don't want to be standing out in the backyard pumping out a septic tank, oh, and then you have to go someplace and the neighbors hold their nose when you walk in the door. No, I tell you what, I know people that'll pump that out for a living, absolutely, and liquid waste removal, and sewer and sink drain lines clean. Who am I talking about? I'm talking about Dino Septic Service, and they absolutely have expanded their business, and believe me, they can serve you with fast, fair, friendly service. All you've got to do is give them a call at 436-6526, or in Burley at 678-1638. They'll pull in the yard with the big truck that says Smells Cargo on the way. Dino Septic Service, you get ahold of them today. It is that time of the month for, we need a little fanfare, or at least a little mariachi band that would go, here comes the Idaho Fishing Game. Good morning, Craig White, how are you?
Good morning, Zeb, I'm doing great.
I didn't do that right. I mean, you are the regional supervisor. I've got to get all that in, don't I?
No, you don't. Let's not get carried away.
No, I agree with you. Here we go. The guy that cleans the toilets and sweeps the floors, Craig White.
That is absolutely true some days.
Is it really?
Oh, yeah. I was changing out the soap dispenser the other day.
Good old soap dispensers. Oh, man of all trades, I appreciate that. What's going on with the Fishing Game? Is we're, can you believe that we're almost at the end of April already?
Well, I'm glad we're almost to the end of April. Winter was about killing me, but it does seem to be flying by.
Yeah. So, right now, you've got a list here of 937 items that we've got to get in, and you asked me the question on the top one, have I ever been to a sage grouse lek?
Yes, have you?
No.
Well...
I've never had a member of the Fishing Game invite me to go watch all the fun and frivolity.
Well, we need to get you out there and see a sage grouse lek. So, you know, this time is when sage grouse, starting about 1st of April, and they'll go through about the first part of May, they get out on leks. Leks are an area that's kind of cleared of brush, lower vegetation, usually kind of a grassy area, wet area, in the center of sage brush. And, and the males get out there, and if you haven't seen it, it's really kind of extraordinary. You need to look it up on YouTube, listeners, but those males get out there and they have these air sacs on their chest, and they actually pop them out. And so, normally, when you're just looking at a male sage grouse, it's just kind of a white feathered chest, but these air sacs come out, and, and they're just popping them, and they make this kind of popping sound. And they're there with their tail feathers, the fan all fanned out, and they're strutting around, and...
It sounds like a movie Urban Cowboy with John Travolta.
Oh, it's more like a high school dance. You know, those young teenager males out there, you know, trying to strut around. But, much, much more funner to watch, the sage grouse lekking. And it's really neat, because, you know, they don't walk all through the area, they, on this kind of flat area, and it could be on a hillside, but you know, there's, there's room for them to kind of walk around, but they don't walk all over the lek, per se. Lek may be something, you know, the size of a swimming pool area, or maybe, you know, larger, like the size of a football field.
Really?
And, yeah, and they get out there, and, and each one of them has their little spot, you know, their little three...
Yeah, I was going to ask you, do they have a lot of fights, and the bartender has to throw them out, or what?
Oh, sometimes. That's the best thing, is you'll get two that kind of get, you know, beak to beak, and suddenly they'll kind of jump up in the air and kind of, you know, going at each other a little bit before they turn away.
You're kind of a sadist for working over the Fishing Game.
Well, it's just a really neat thing, and the hens will come in, and, and they'll, they'll actually kind of make their ways typically to the center of the lek.
The hens?
Yes, the hens.
Okay, here we go, Urban Cowboy.
Yes, they're trying to find, you know, selection, you know, the best selection for males. And what researchers have done, this is an older study, but it's really neat. They have those air sacs, and they're kind of a grayish, you know, skin type color. And, and what they're looking for, the hens, they've discovered is, is if they have a clear air sac, because...
I'm waiting for you to paint yourself into a hole.
It could happen. But what researchers did to kind of figure this out, what the hens are looking for, they actually caught some males and, and ones that were kind of at the dominant spot on the lek, and, and most of the females would go to, and they actually took a red marker, and they put it on that air sac that I was describing. And, and then they put them back out there, and suddenly those males kind of lost their, their place and the favor, favor with the females, because the females use that as a sign of fitness. And in other words, there's little nematodes that some, some sage males, sage grouse get, and it's kind of like a unhealthy looking male. And that's what those little red dots represented is unhealthy.
So, if they see a nerd on the dance floor, they kind of shy away?
Uh, you know, yeah, actually, that's a pretty good analogy there, Zeb.
Holy cow, that's pretty interesting. I mean, I can see where a guy with the Fishing Game could become really introverted studying this all the time.
A lot of us are nerds, and truly, we do, we do personality classifications of our employees, and by and large, by and large, most of our biologists are introverts, not extroverts.
I can hear the birds. They're sitting there going, oh, here comes that nerdy guy with the Fishing Game again. Stick your chest out over there, Melvyn.
But, you got to go to a sage grouse lek, you know, it's really neat.
How long do you sit there?
Well, they're most active about a half hour before sunrise, at least that's when you can see, see them up to about an hour and a half after sunrise, and then they all just disperse.
So, they got limited times that they'll be on the dance floor?
Yeah, it's just in the morning, a half hour before sunrise, a half hour, hour and a half.
Well, they got to go to work, they got jobs.
Well, they do. They got to go, they got to get their lunch pail and go get their job.
What happens to the, what happens to the hens? What do they do then?
Uh, they go off and they start nesting. So, yeah, this is a period, they start nesting, and, and, you know, they'll come back to...
They buy tickets every night to go back?
They, they usually lay probably 12 to 15 eggs, you know, so over a 30 day period, they're laying their eggs, and then when they figure they're done, they're going to set on the, on the nest and incubate it.
Oh, my goodness. And that's from like the end of April?
It's when they start incubating.
Well, the, the leks themselves.
The lekking starts really about the end of March, you know.
In the snow?
Yeah, you'll actually see, sometimes see these areas kind of cleared off, and they'll start then, and, and the females will start attending the leks, and they'll start, you know, kind of the nesting process somewhere in April.
Now, did the birds, this is a dumb question, but did the birds basically clean off an area?
Not that I know of. I think mostly these are areas that, you know, are going to get wind swept, or, or kind of more exposed out in the sun, so they kind of go off faster. But certainly, there are cases, are they'll, you know, do the dance on top of the snow, but sometimes, you know, sometimes, you know, weather probably does affect a late start.
To kind of join in with the fun and festive occasion, do the Fishing Game officers dance right along with the birds, or what?
You know, it's funny you ask that. At college, I, I had a course, and, and what I was presenting is on sage grouse. Sage grouse in southern Idaho is a big, big issue. And, and I talked a friend who was doing sage grouse, he was really into sage grouse, to come in and do the display, the whole dance, and...
Yeah, Craig, please don't demonstrate here. I mean, it's okay, I'll take your word for it. He started to get up on the table, folks.
It's kind of difficult on the radio to really describe this, but...
Good, good. Good, good.
But, yeah, I got him, uh, talked into displaying a little bit what, you know, what it looked like.
How many Jack Daniels did it take to get him to do this?
Well, none, but, uh, probably speaks to his sanity, doesn't it?
Why is it so important for you and fishing game officers and people equated with the fishing game to understand and know, uh, about the sage grouse and what they do? I mean, what, what kinda studies does it give you information wise?
Well, these leks are where we gather our data on how many males, and the number of males really drives whether there's a harvest season, but it also influences the state's, uh, sage grouse plan. It also influences BLM plans, it influences ranchers in the sense of, uh, what BLM, you know, terms may be on, on grazing areas and development, whether it's gas, mineral, that, that's all in the West now impacted by sage grouse because of the threat of sage grouse maybe one day being listed. Now, the states have worked together, and the Idaho, um, state of Idaho has developed a sage grouse plan under, uh, previous Governor Butch Otter's leadership, and it's really helped us work with, you know, our folks, which include ranchers and developers and hunters, to say, how can we have sage grouse on the landscape and also these other uses that are important to Idaho?
And you said it's working.
It is.
Okay. I'm glad to hear you say that, because, you know, the one thing that bothers me is Big Brother back in DC with his kind of nose hanging over the fence and looking down on everybody. It bothers me to think one size fits all, and it really makes me feel good to think that the state and ranchers and people like yourself can all work together and come up with a unified voice of success instead of finger pointing.
Yeah. No, I think, uh, you know, there's been some really good collaborative effort to develop that, uh, you know, state plan, and, you know, there's always gonna be challenges and griefs that think it's not enough, but, you know, it's, it's a relatively new plan, uh, and a couple of years old, and, and I think we're going to see that as we work together, we'll have success.
Absolutely. I like that. Very good. Will, if I consent to go with you or someone up to a lek to watch this rather weird, uh, dance, uh, are people gonna talk about us behind our back or something?
They, they might, but that's okay, Zeb.
Now, this next one, I've gotta admit, you, you've kinda lost me. The question is, can I place bait on my friend's bait site? What do you mean?
Well, I'm talking about bear baiting, and, and I left it vague just to try and, you know, get that hook out there.
It did, you know, I thought you were talking about taking my angler worms and putting them over, you know, next to somebody else's rod and reel.
You could do that too, as long as they're your friends.
Okay.
But, yeah, the question often comes up, hey, my friend's out, uh, has a, he's running a bait site. You can get a baiting permit, and you can run up to three sites on that baiting permit for spring bear hunting. And people often ask, well, can I, uh, place bait on my friend's bait site? Maybe he can't get out there, or maybe I'm just with him. And so I just wanna remind people of the rule, that if you are actually placing bait, you yourself need a bait permit, and you need to have your tag on that site, if you are doing it while your friend's not there.
Okay, I, I was misunderstanding still. So in other words, like if myself, I had a cold, the flu, broken leg, whatever, and I called you up and I said, hey, would you please go out and refurbish or replenish the bait at a site, that's illegal unless you also have a permit?
Unless I also have a permit and my, my, you know, one of my three tags is also, uh, on that bait site. Now, I can attend you, I can go with you, and as long as I have the permit, I can help you place bait.
I see.
But, uh, you know, me actually going when you're not around and placing bait, I would need to have my tag on.
Bear hunting, uh, I know my son-in-law has, uh, uh, got some bears on occasions, and, uh, to me, how dangerous is bear hunting? Do you always know where they're are behind you in the bush, or, I mean, how dangerous is it to be out there going after a little grizz?
Well, you just kinda hit the key difference, whether you're hunting a black bear or grizz. Now, it's illegal to bear bait for, you know, a grizzly. Of course, we still don't have a grizzly hunt in Idaho. We almost had one, and, uh, the court stepped in, but...
Can I interrupt you right there?
Sure.
Why did they say no? Because I've had a lot of people that have called me from around the state say that we do have, uh, ample enough grizzly numbers to have a hunt.
Well, we do have ample enough, uh, numbers over in that kinda greater Yellowstone area.
Right, right.
Uh, Eastern Idaho there, and the US Fish and, uh, US Fish and Wildlife Service, as well as the state, states being Montana, Wyoming, and Idaho, worked together to get to a point where delisting was proposed and done, um, but, you know, there are groups that will always say, there's not enough, or we don't like the principle of hunting bears, grizzly bears, and so they went to the judge, and the judge ruled in their, you know, favor.
Now, I would imagine, Craig, and I, I don't wanna take you out of your own bailiwick here, but I've read stories about Montana is developing a large problem by not being able to hunt the grizzlies. Is that correct?
Um, you know, I don't know Montana's side of it as much as Idaho's, and I can tell you that, uh, Montana has more grizzlies in that system.
Like the Bob Marshall and et cetera.
And Idaho, you know, we have fewer. We were actually, uh, allotted the fewest tags under this, but even we have situations where it's like we're having to remove a male grizzly bear because it's just getting into trouble, and it repeatedly gets into trouble, or it's becoming a, you know, a real serious threat, and we end up having to lethally remove it where that grizzly bear could have been harvested.
Absolutely.
And it's just, it's just doesn't make practical pragmatics.
How dangerous are they in the wild? I've read stories about, you know, you don't wanna be out there without some kinda protection, whatever, uh, but really how dangerous are bears in the Eastern Idaho going on up into Wyoming and Montana areas?
Well, so the grizzlies, um, you know, they put a little fear into me. Black bears, you know, normal day, normal situation doesn't. Black berries, black bear, sorry, are pretty docile. Grizzly bears, however, they're, they're a different, you know, mindset, and, uh, you know, they're king of the hill, and, and they have that swagger and attitude about it, and, and they may bluff charge you, or they may decide, yeah, I'm really gonna charge you.
Bluff charge you. May I state that if a guy on crutches like myself is bluff charged, you still ain't gonna catch me?
Well, that's good. So, you know, there have been incidences, attacks, and fatalities. Some of those are just associated with, say, someone's out there, uh, harvests an elk, doesn't take good care of, of, you know, really protecting, or becomes unaware, and a grizzly comes in, moves in, wants, wants the elk. There are situations like that. There are situations where they're coming in to someone's chicken coop, and if you surprise them, that's not a good thing.
Let me ask you this, though. The advertisements that you hear and read about what to do if confronted with a bear, and all the time on every one of the ads, it always says, stay calm. Now, please, as a fishing game officer that knows wildlife better than I, please, how do you revert back to those two words, stay calm?
I don't know how you do it, honestly. I mean, I've read it too, and, uh, you know, I'll share an experience with you. I was, this, I was up in Northern Idaho on the lock saw and, uh, stunning elk calf and, and mortality, and I went in on, on a mortality of, of an elk, and I'm in this thick cyanophus, about six to eight feet tall, so I can barely, I can't see over it, I can just kinda be through this. I have my dog with me, and I have a pistol, you know, on, uh, with me, and all of a sudden, I hear this popping sound, which female bears and males will make, kinda popping their jaw, and it sounded awfully close, and I see this bear cub off a little bit, run up a tree, and I thought, I got a mama bear, I'm close to the elk, it's, might protect it, or it might protect the cub, and those are the situations where you start to get a little nervous with black bears. In most part, black bears are, unless they become habituated, they're gonna go the other way, except potentially if their cubs threaten, or they're trying to defend a food source.
Absolutely.
And so I'm very nervous. Biologists, you know, I've spent my time in the outdoors, but I had pulled out my pistol, and I always leave, it's a cylinder six-shot, I probably shouldn't say this on the radio, but cylinder six-shot, you know, uh, revolver, and I always leave it, uh, on, you know, on, on an empty cylinder.
Empty chamber, yeah.
And even the next one. And I started going, kinda moving that revolver, the cylinder around, and I was so nervous, I had lost track of what...
You were playing Russian roulette with yourself.
Cylinder, it was odd, and it was down at my side, you know, being safe, but at the same time, I thought, all right, I need to calm down before I shoot myself in the foot.
Yeah.
And I put it back in, and I just calmed down and relaxed. This bear, if it was going to have done something, would have, it wouldn't have been popping its jaw.
Yeah.
And, and so my point is, is seasoned people, I don't know if I was seasoned, but seasoned people get, lose their minds for a minute.
We've got a caller, I wanna...
You just gotta calm down.
We've got a caller, but I wanna ask you this, and then it says in regards to pepper spray. It usually says in the ad, stay calm, take the cover off the, the spray, and point it directly in the bear's face. Now, you don't have a lot of time if that bear is within spraying distance. A, stay calm is out of the question. B, take the cover off and remain calm and try to aim that spray at the bear's face. What kinda idiots write this material?
Well, I don't know if you wanna get to your caller first or not, but, but bear pepper spray has actually been found to be pretty, uh, effective, and for most people is probably safer to carry around than a pistol, you know, as far as people that are maybe not really accustomed.
Especially guys that don't know what chamber they...
Hey, I probably should tell you. It caused a lot of embarrassment for me.
Are you imitating Barney Fife?
But, you know, I wanted to be real with people and recognize, you know, that moment of being calm, uh, is, is tough to do.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
And that pepper spray, the good thing about it, it will shoot out, you know, I think they say 20 or 30 feet on it, and it will, I, you know.
Really?
And, and if you shoot it out and you move it in a little hand motion, like a wax-on, wax-off, you're, you're, what you're creating is a cloud of pepper spray. And I've been told, real experiences of bears, grizzlies kinda hitting that, and they just kinda, kinda come through it, but they'll stop and they'll kinda shake and, you know, and it just causes them to pause.
And there'd be time enough for even a guy on crutches to adios.
Well, I don't think, I don't think you're gonna outrun it.
Or in my case, you would leave me there for a little lunch while you escaped.
Well, exactly, but I think what happens is it kinda stops that, you know, we have a flight, humans have a flight and fright, you know, fight, and the bears, it kinda interrupts that, you know, pepper spray, this is kinda my theory, interrupts that pepper spray as it gets through the olfactory and causes kind of a disconnect long enough for them to figure out, what am I doing, and do I even care about this?
Okay, we've got a caller with a question. I've got three minutes, and then I've got a hard break at the bottom of the hour. Caller, quickly, you're on the air.
Yes, I missed the first part, but, but one thing with bears, be sure you go with somebody else's slower runner than you are.
So are you insinuating, lady, that they should take me?
Not necessarily. Just someone slower than I am.
Okay.
Um, yes, now, um, is there any restriction about where bait should be placed, and also, what about, is, I didn't hear the beginning, so are both black and brown bear seasons open now?
We'll answer that.
What I asked about the baiting is because we have someone that baits right at the opening, at the added of our mining operation, and at the beginning of the tunnel, and it's getting very dangerous. That old sow up there for years has been fine with us, and now she's getting really aggressive.
Okay. We will have him answer that on the air quickly, and then I've got a hard break. Go ahead, Craig, if you would.
So there are restrictions, not per se related to people's activities, you know, as far as the mine shaft, um, that sort of thing. The restrictions relate to distances from streams, uh, and, and those can be found in the regulations, and depending on where this mine shaft is, there may still be a stream or something that, that actually should cause that bait site to be pushed from the back.
All right. Uh, we're going to take a little break right now, but first of all, I've gotta tell everybody to be sure and remember Lennox and Ramsey Heating and Electric. Your whole home comfort systems are available, and if you need a new one, Lennox Home Comfort System, check it out at Ramsey Heating and Electric, and they're offering up to $1,700 in rebates on a new system. Yep, check it out today at Ramsey Heating and Electric, and call them at 678-0459, or visit them online at ramseysonline.com. Terms and conditions apply. See the dealer for details at Ramsey Heating and Electric and Lennox. Right now, we're gonna send it back over to our main studio. We'll be back in about three minutes.
And now, back to Zeb at the Ranch on AM 1230 KBAR. To reach Zeb, call 436-2244, or toll-free 1-866-927-4587. And now, here is Zeb.
Oh, Davy, Davy Crockett killed him a bar when he was only three. We'll have more with Craig White in just a minute, talking about Davy Crockett. Don't forget the Minnacasha Chamber of Commerce Women's Expo is coming up on April 24th next week at the Burley Best Western Inn and Convention Center, starting at nine o'clock in the morning, going till about four in the afternoon. Hidden gem, excuse me, hidden gems, explore, engage, and empower. Something for everybody at the Women's Expo. Don't forget, the Minnacasha Chamber of Commerce has the tickets. They're only $20, including lunch. Stop over on the 24th. This is going to be a great Women's Expo, sponsored by the Idaho Central Credit Union, Intermountain Cassia Regional Hospital, Wright Physical Therapy, and Tailored Living. Don't forget, coming up on the 24th. You wanted to add something about the black and the brown bears before we go any further.
Yeah, the caller asked the question about it, the, the different phase, phrase, phases, sorry, of bears are open. In other words, she said brown and, and black, and just wanna clarify, black bears, um, the, the name is kind of a, a little bit of a, it takes you down a side trail, thinking that, that that species is only black, and that's not, uh, correct. The black bear, the species of black bear can come in all sorts of colors, cinnamon, blonde, black, brown, um...
So what do they define as a black bear then?
Well, it's the species itself, and the way you tell it apart from a brown, a grizzly bear, up in Alaska, they call grizzlies brown bear, and so that's why sometimes there's confusion.
Yeah, I'm confused right now.
Is, yeah, cause, so these are just common names. The common name of black bear versus the common name used up in Alaska for a grizzly is a brown bear.
Okay.
But the color of a black bear can be, and it can be brown, it can be black, it can be blonde, it can be cinnamon.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, and the difference is, is ear size is, is one thing. Um, black bears, as in the species of black bears, actually have longer ears than grizzlies. The grizzlies are more rounded, and the claws, the, uh, grizzly bear's claws are inch and a half, uh, approximately, or more long, and, uh, a black bear's is closer to a half an inch to, at the most, three quarters.
Tell me something honestly, and I really, and trust your, your professional opinion. How many people would really pay attention to the ear's size and their stature when you're being chased by a bear?
At that point, if you're being chased, I, I don't think that matters.
Okay.
But I'll let you know that you can go onto our website, and we actually have a black bear, brown, uh, grizzly bear kind of identification course. It's, it's actually pretty fun to do, and it can, it shows different pictures of bears in different situations, and, and it really is a neat thing to do, and it teaches you a lot.
Yeah, I can see where it'd be a neat thing to do, and you have your partner, which is much more fleet afoot than you are, saying, bear, you better run, and he's already 30 yards ahead of you.
Well, I was gonna mention, Zeb, but, you know, you're, just carry a club with you, 'cause you just need to knock the other person down, and you'll be fine.
Okay, lunch. How cool is turkey hunting?
Well, turkey hunting is pretty cool. My, uh, first experience, uh, was down south of here, in another state. I had a, uh, college, uh, friend that said, you need to come try this. It was a draw area, just like the ones in the South Hills are.
Up at Cottonwood, is that a place where you can draw?
Yeah, around here, you can draw, uh, at Cottonwood, and, uh, I was fortunate down in, in Utah is where I was at, living at, uh, to draw a turkey tag, and my friend Leroy took me down, and we had a blast. Um, trying to call turkeys in, you have a little caller, you try the, you know, gobble of the males.
Is that the thing that kinda sounds like a little rasp or something?
Yeah.
Or whatever it is, yeah.
It's a little rasp sound. They also have a little round slate, and, uh, you make a little putt sound, that's the female, and so you can do both the male and female sounds, and it gets those gobblers all fired up, and they come in strutting with their tail feathers out, and, and, uh, it's pretty neat.
Are they hard, they, the turkeys, hard to get in? They're pretty cautious, aren't they?
They, they are cautious. If you catch them right, though, they kinda throw caution to the wind. Once again, going back to that teenager, male teenager at the high school dancer in the football game, you know, they're trying to prove their stuff.
Really?
And, uh, so that's how you end up, you know, being successful, is, is you can get them sometimes to throw caution. But wild turkeys are not the same as domestic. They do have more caution, they are tougher, uh, and they're a lot of fun.
Is there an archery season on them also?
Uh, no, um, boy, you just asked, I'm trying to rack my brain real quick here to remember if archery is allowed. I don't, you know, I'm gonna have to check on that, Zeb. I was about to say no, but...
How hard is it to find? How hard is it to find the wild turkeys? I'm not talking about what you can buy at the liquor store, I'm talking about, did they, did they stay on the ground? Do they, uh, stay in trees? I don't know anything about turkeys.
So, they roost in, in trees at night, the rest of the time, they're pretty much on the ground. But way people will scout for them and try and find them is they'll go out in the afternoon, and, and they might try a coyote call, they might try just, uh, you know, a turkey call, they might even make just a loud noise. I've heard turkeys, wild turkeys respond to a jet flying overhead, they just gobble back, thinking, you know, what's this loud?
Gobble, gobble, gobble.
So, right, you know, before dusk is when they go up to the trees, and people go out and try and find them in the tree. And then the next morning, you come back to that spot, and you kind of set up, uh, by the tree, not too close, you don't want to spook them, but far enough that as, as the morning sun comes up, and they start getting ready to come off the roost, you can start, you know, making those noises. Uh, and a lot of people get these decoys that, you know, look like turkeys, and put them out there, you can get them at, uh, you know, Walmart, other places. And you put them out there, and, uh, some of them are really fancy, some of them are just kind of silhouettes. But you put them out there, and those turkeys kind of start to hear and locate you, and they have pretty good eyesight. And they'll come down, thinking it's another turkey already on display, or a hen, if you put a hen out there. And, uh, and so, it's.
Now, do you have to allow them to fly, or can you shoot them on the ground standing there, or what?
Uh, no, you typically want them on the ground, not trying to take a flying, because they're such a big bird.
They need a longer runway.
Yeah, well, they need a lo- longer runway, but if you allow them, I mean, they're kind of, will bunch up and, uh, and actually kind of protect themselves a little bit intuitively, it's not on purpose or anything. But you really want them on the ground strutting, because their head tends to, it, it could be down, but it also comes up. You want a headshot, you don't want a body shot per se on a turkey, they're such a big bird.
Really?
Pellets don't necessarily always penetrate into the body that well. Um, so your pattern is really kind of ahead, that is the best shot.
You gotta be a pretty good shot.
Yeah, um, well, you need to either be close, you know? 30 yards is starting to get out there, although with, you know, a nitro load, magnum load, um, 30, 40 yards is okay. But for me, that's kind of the edge of where I want to be, your pattern's getting wider, you want them, you know, in close, which is part of the fun, is you got this bird, you're trying to draw it in. And, you know, it is a canny bird, is a wild bird, that's how they survive.
Well, how many turkeys can you take during a season?
So, um, you actually, in Idaho, uh, can get upwards of three, because there's a spring season.
Oh.
And you can get a tag for the spring. And then there's a fall season. And, uh, and, and that's a little different hunting, because they're not strutting, it's not the breeding season anymore.
Yeah.
And in most of those cases, you can shoot hens as well, because it's harder to tell them apart. And you can, uh, have a tag for that, too. Um, in some cases, you can have another tag in the spring.
Well, now, are they the wild turkeys, uh, have you eaten a wild turkey?
I have, um, been fortunate that, uh, my son, uh, when we lived over in east, or western Idaho, in the Napa area, drew a tag for what's called Unit 38. Um, it's kind of the Boise River bottom, Payette. And, uh, we were able to find some private land to get on. A lot of turkeys on private land over there, it's mostly private land. And, uh, twice, he was able to draw a tag, a youth tag, and harvested turkey both times. And, and, uh, honestly, for me, the, the preparation I did, I liked the best, is I actually, uh, cut, um, out of the meat, particularly the breast of the turkey into strips, and did teriyaki strips. Soaked it in, in teriyaki, and then put it on the barbecue, and.
And what time is Thanksgiving dinner at your place, so I'm not late? Sounds really good.
Thanksgiving is, uh, dinner is usually around May 15th in, in the springtime, if we're successful. We tried to, uh, both my son and my daughter, um, put them in for the controlled hunt here, but they were unsuccessful to draw.
And you just go someplace and sit?
Well, once you've located the turkeys, you go somewhere and sit. But you gotta get out, you gotta be scouting for them. Like I said, one way to scout is just right before dusk is to be out there listening, maybe make some noise, see if they'll gobble back, and find a tree that they're gonna roost.
You could have some sick friend on the other side of the ravine going.
Yeah, you could have another hunter, and then you're both sitting there the next day, thinking, "I can't wait for these turkeys to come down." And the only turkeys are the, are the non-feathered too.
You've got it. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Good morning, Zeb, and your guest. Uh, my brother-in-law lives in Pocatella, east of Pocatella, kind of up in the hills. And he has a creek running down below his property. But on his property, right now, he has 80 turkeys.
Oh, my. Oh, my. All right.
They're gonna start mating pretty quick?
Yeah, they are, um, you know, the season usually starts about April 15th and goes till, um, end of May sometimes. And, and this is the period also, just like with this, you know, sage grouse, a little earlier, but this is the time that turkeys get revved up.
All right, well, we know where to go turkey hunting, my friend. Thank you very much for your call. I just had a crazy.
In sight, so be careful.
All right, buddy. Uh, I just had a crazy thought. What would happen if you had a farm, and you had a whole bunch of wild turkeys that were right on the vicinity perimeter of your farm, and you also had a bunch of peacocks? What would happen if they mated?
Yeah. I don't know.
Just a quick thought, I'm sorry.
Peacock, I'm not a big fan of peacocks, but.
Oh, I think they're the dirtiest birds in the world.
That would, uh, probably result in a very annoying bird. That might taste good, though.
Yeah. Well, it'd be colorful sitting on the table.
Oh, yeah, it would be something else.
Let me pay some bills here with the weather forecast, and then we're gonna talk about crappies and good fishing at CJ Strike. Don't forget Scarrow's Meats, 331 North Road, Jerome, the number to call, 324-7657. Or you can go to their website, scarrowsmeats.com. Don Scarrow and the crew with delicious meats, whether it's the tri tips, or whether it's the marinated pork ribs, all the different breakfast bacons or sausages, bratwurst, you name it, it's absolutely phenomenal. From Scarrow's Meats in Jerome. And right now, here's Gina with the weather.
It's gonna be a beautiful day as we hit midweek here. We're looking at the weather forecast, we're expecting sunny skies with a high of 60, winds out of the west, right around 15 miles an hour. Gustess high is 30 miles an hour. For tonight, mostly clear skies, expecting a low of 38. Tomorrow, another beautiful day, sunny skies, high of 67, mostly clear and 42 for Thursday night. By Friday, sunny and 77. Unfortunately, as we head on into the weekend, we are expecting some rain showers, mostly cloudy skies, and highs are gonna be in the upper 50s. That's what we're looking at with the forecast for Zeb at the Ranch.
Thank you, Gina, and brought to you by Don Scarrow and the crew at Delicious Scarrow's Meats, 331 North Road, Jerome. Please get ahold of them today. Uh, wonderful, wonderful people. If you've got a family gathering coming up, or a reunion, whatever, be sure and check with them. Scarrow's Meats in Jerome, 324-7657. They are changing the way we eat, one delicious bite at a time. We're gonna have to hurry to get through all of these. First of all, let's talk about, uh, I skipped over one. Uh, fishing Cokoni, uh, tell us a little bit about that.
Well, I just want to let people know that, uh, this is the time to get out there, if you, uh, like Cokoni fishing, uh, and you probably already know that. And there's, we've got probably some of the three best reservoirs within two hours. Uh, one is Anderson, one is Lucky Peak, one's Arrow Rock. Of course, they're all on the South Fork of the Boise, or on the, on the Boise, South Fork and Middle Fork, um, combined. And, and it's just a great area to, if you're Cokoni, if you fish for Cokoni, it's just a fantastic resource we have. Anderson's been really kind of lights out the last few years. Uh, and if you've never tried Cokoni, I hadn't until a few years ago, it is one of the funnest things to do. You gotta have some different equipment and a boat. Um, you have to have some down riggers on that boat typically to be successful, but it's a lot of fun.
Okay. Now, a fish that I didn't know was as prominent here in the state of Idaho as it is back in the Midwest, we used to go crappie fishing all the time back in Wisconsin, is the crappie fish native to Idaho?
You know, I don't know the answer to that question, Zeb. Um, kind of feel like today's stump the chump, and it's being successful. But, uh, I don't know if it's, if it's native, I don't think most warm water fish is my understanding are, but we have a lot of warm water fish.
Along with, they're considered a pan fish, right?
Yeah.
And, along with the bluegills?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but what about bluegills? Are they dominant to this area also?
Well, once again, you're stumping the chump here, but what I can tell you, whether they're native or not, is, um, with, with the dams and the change in, in kind of water temperature along the snake, it, it's made it, and that's why I don't, my understanding is, is they weren't. Um, because that, that change with, with putting in the dams for 100 years has changed water temperature and other stuff, which has made it great for, for warm water fish, such as bluegills and crappie. And CJ Strike has, has, uh, become a phenomenal, uh, place to go crappie fishing. People just can pull them in, and I understand it's just rip.
Have you done it?
I've never done crappie fishing.
You, I, I think the tackle is quite a bit lighter, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you're talking to a little fish, I mean, you can just do it with a regular, my understanding, rod and reel.
Yeah.
And I was just talking to some friends, uh, you know, Sunday, that had been over to CJ, and they said it was just lights out.
Really?
Yeah.
What's the limit on those per day?
Uh, you know, it's pretty high. I, I'd have to check the regulations, um, but it's, it's pretty high. I mean, people fill up coolers full of them.
Okay. Now, you say here on the next point of interest that we've got to get to, want to track fishing, follow Idaho Fishing Game Magic Valley page, what does that mean?
So, you know, people ask, well, how do I know what's happening, and what's good? And how do I know what ponds are getting stocked? And I just want to let people know that they could go to the Idaho Fishing Game Magic Valley Facebook page.
Oh.
And we, uh, we put on links and reports of local areas that are, you know, how, how things are going, and what's kind of hot and whatnot. Um, and then you can go to the webpage, Idaho Fishing Game webpage, and under fishing, you can actually click down, and there's a stocking report. So, there's two ways to kind of get at the stocking report. One, and the easiest way, in my opinion, is the Fishing Game webpage. You can go and look at, you know, what's gonna be stocked in the next week by.
Oh, I see, I see.
And the pond in the area. And then on our Magic Valley Facebook page for Idaho Fishing Game, uh, you know, we put up reports and other stuff.
Okay.
People post reports, so it's a good way to find out what's, what waters are, are really kind of hot right now.
Now, these kids this summer that are 13 now, going to be turning 14, do they need a fishing license?
Not until they turn 14, but when they do turn 14, they, they will. And let me remind people, um, a few years ago, we started what was called price lock. So, the legislator said, we're, we're, you know, it is time, it's been over 10 years since fish, there's been an increase in, in license prices. And we all know inflation raises things, your movie ticket's more, everything's more. Um, it's been over 10 years, we'll do price lock, but we're gonna give, and, and, and we were part of this, and we're appreciative, we want to give folks a break. So, those people that are buying every year, if they bought that year, and then, and the year after, and that they buy this year, they're still at the same price as they were several years ago. Well, what about a kid that's gonna turn 14 this year?
Right.
Is he now at a higher price because he was never in price lock? He was never locked in at that price a few years ago. Well, if he buys a three-year license, it's kind of retroactively to 2017 and 18, and now 19, but at least he's locked in at that price.
So, he would be locked in until perhaps 2021 or so, with the same price?
Yeah, we don't know how long this will last, it's not intended to last forever, but.
Is that still true for adults, too?
Yes, it is. Adults that haven't bought a license the last few years, they could still be locked in if they buy a license this year.
Uh, quickly, reminder, no mail-in applications.
Yeah, so, um, we're right in the middle of putting in for moose, sheep, uh, goat controlled hunt applications. It closes April 30th, so if you've been wanting to put in for a moose, sheep, or goat, you have till the end of the month. But wanted to remind people that we no longer accept mail-in applications. And that's not just for moose, sheep, goats, that's for, you know, big game, too, pronghorn, uh, elk, deer. And that's a little, that doesn't happen, that application period doesn't happen till May, and it closes June 5th, but just want to give people that reminder.
What do things look like for this year? I mean, fishing and going into the fall with habitat, and numbers, and, and the fawns, et cetera, what, what does it look like overall?
Well, it looks like it'll be a good year. Um, you know, two years ago was, was a pretty tough year, uh, remember that snow year? We had late snow up high, uh, and when I say up high, northern part of the region, uh, Haley and all that. Late snow in, in February, that's gonna affect kind of a small segment of the deer population, because, you know, there are some that try to winter in that valley. But most of them are down lower in 45, you know, Glens, north of Glens Ferry and all that. And all of that, even though we had snow and precipitation, it never built up. The only place it really built up in this region, in areas that deer try to winter, and elk try and winter, is, is the Big Wood. So, there'll be some small drainage effects, but I think overall, uh, we came through this year pretty good.
One thing I never asked you about, and I forgot, uh, I was gone in the month of February, excuse me, and that was, what about the pheasant season for this past year? Was it good, average, below average, above average, et cetera?
You know, we have a hard time really tracking, um, our bird populations. We do put out wing barrels, but most of those wing barrels are more on Forest Service roads, so we're mostly getting grouse. Uh, we do a check station for sage grouse, um, and, and then we get the forest grouse. So, we don't really have a way to monitor how pheasants have done as far as harvest, other than, you know, we do some roadside driving and, and look. My, my take in talking to people, um, is pheasants were, were up last year. Honestly, coming in today, uh, between Hanson and here, a pheasant started crossing the road, and I, a, you know, rooster, and I almost hit him with the car, I had to slam on the brakes. And I've just seen more and more pheasants.
So, fine. Uh, we're gonna have this good word and be back to wrap things up. Don't forget, right now, right this very minute, a great big spring tire sale is going on at all of your seven locations of your Magic Valley LeSchwab Tire Centers. You can save a lot of money on safe-driving tires for your car, your pickup, and your SUV, horse trailers, boat trailers, whatever. Please stop in and let them serve you.